All open the Estacada City Council meeting, if you'll please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, city can have a roll call, please.
Councillor Dunsborough?
Present.
Councillor Gates?
Councillor Hughes?
Here.
Councillor Liddkey?
I'm here, sorry.
Councillor Strobel? Councillor Tenbusch?
Here.
Mayor Drinkwong?
Here, thank you very much, city. Okay, we are at the first citizen and community group comment, and as I said, you have three minutes to speak your piece, and I'm going to start with all these. So it should take a little bit of time. I want to make sure that you all have a chance to speak. So Christie Jackson is the first one I have.
These are for the public hearing, mayor.
Oh, you want to use them just on the public hearing? Okay, so that's all I have there. All right. So all my slips tonight then are for the public hearing. Is that right? That's what I'm getting from this?
Well, except for Brandy's, which will be at the
Oh, the second reading. Okay, great. Then we will pass over the citizen and community group comment. We will move on to the consent agenda. And on the consent agenda, you've all had a chance to read what's on the consent agenda. Do I have anything that needs to be pulled out or?
Yes, mayor, can you re-report the Resolution two zero two two dash zero one zero resolution? The Estacada City Council declaring a sole source provider.
Okay. And we'll pull that into council business. Is that okay?
That's correct. We'll move that down to council business, and then we can, the council can discuss that before they vote on it.
Good. So that said, we have the May twenty third, twenty twenty two council minutes. Can I get a motion to approve that?
I move to approve the May twenty third, twenty twenty two council minutes.
Yeah, first on the
Second.
First and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Okay, we're at Department and Committee Reports.
Before we move on, can we, we didn't have it on the agenda here for the council business. But can we add to the, to the agenda, the discussion for the Chamber of Commerce? That was meant to be on here from the last meeting.
Is that something that we have, that we can add into that, or is that something we put on the next?
If that's our, if that's all right with the rest of the council, we can add to the council business, at the end of the council business, a discussion about chamber, or I guess it would be a discussion about allocating funds to nonprofits.
Uh, yes, and also I think there is, we're going to discuss the proximity of the chamber with the city, as was brought up by a citizen last council meeting, and we were, we asked to have it on the agenda this council meeting, so we can discuss it. So.
So, so basically discussion, it's more of a discussion of their relationship with the Chamber of Commerce?
Uh, yeah, and then it also, you can incorporate the funding piece we were talking about as well. But I think it's kind of a focus around that area.
Okay, is that all right with the rest of the council?
Is that okay with council? Katie, you have something?
I am underprepared for that discussion. I'm so sorry. I feel like this is already a pretty big agenda as it is, and I, I would really like to be able to have an in-depth discussion about what you're talking about, and I think part of that is also going to require some amount of preparation and research. Um, I, I was, I was not prepared to discuss that tonight. I'm so sorry. Is it okay for us to agree that it goes on next agendas, um, the, the next meeting's agenda, so that we all have time to do some research and prepare for that discussion? Is that okay? I'm sorry. I, I don't want to say no. I just, I'm underprepared.
No, that's fine. Jerry, where do you stand on that? So I can hear where you're.
Um, you know, I, I also would like to, you know, do a little bit of research, but I mean, I, I, I I can have the discussion tonight, but I would like to put a little bit more time into it.
Okay.
Can I, can I propose like a preliminary discussion, so at the end of the staff understands what to prepare and put in the packet for next council meeting?
Katie?
Do, do you mind?
No, go ahead.
If it's a short discussion and it's a preliminary discussion to essentially, uh, set the parameters of what the next conversation is going to entail, then I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay, so we'll have a short discussion just based upon the outline, and then we'll go into more depth next council meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Perfect.
Great. Everybody's comfortable with that? All right. All right, so that said, we are going to go into Department and Committee Reports. So I will start off with, uh, you, my dear.
All right, well, I had the opportunity to, um, join the C four meeting this month, and, um, not really a lot was uh, kind of hashed out. They, they had Tramit on, and there was about an hour discussion, basically going over the ten year history of Tramit. Um, you know, fascinating and all, but, uh, bottom line is, uh, due to COVID, obviously with more people telecommuting and, um, companies relocating, Tramit's kind of struggling financially, and because they're struggling financially, they have cut down a lot of lines and service times. So then they were looking at housing and bottom line was they're building more homes, but now they're kind of have inadequate coverage, and so they're trying to kind of creative, think of new creative ways and how they're going to keep moving forward. Um, I mean, I don't, Tramit's not going anywhere, but they don't want to keep downsizing what, you know, what they've already downsized. So, um, that was pretty much the big discussion there was with Tramit, and again, keep, they keep talking the tolling. So still fighting the tolls. Um, but that's, that's about all there was at that meeting. So, yeah.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
You do that, Joel?
Um, I was quite ill the night of the downtown Estacada Commission, so I did not make it to the meeting.
Okay, great. Uh, Jerry? Uh, Katie?
Uh, I do. Uh, it feels like forever ago, because it was May twenty fifth, but we haven't seen each other since then. Um, Parks and Recreation Committee, they had a, a very interesting meeting, and I wanted to share some of the things that were brought up during citizen comment during that meeting to you guys. Um, I encourage you actually all to go and watch the video of that evening, uh, maybe even read some of the minutes from that meeting, uh, specifically the public comment period. Uh, it sounds like there was a very large either misunderstanding, miscommunication, or even on the other end of the spectrum, or that scale would be deceit on the public or on the, the builder's part of the Campanella Park, or the, the Campanella development, I should say. A lot of the neighbors who have land or who have their homes next to what is going to be a park someday were under the impression that that was actually going to be green space and never developed into really anything. So there I had some, uh, I, I, I didn't get to participate in the meeting. I was really just listening, kind of like a fly on the wall, but um, I've had a lot of ideas kind of going through my head since that meeting, and I'm really hoping that we as a city council can probably talk about how to either address what is kind of like this tension happening, and I apologize, my kid is throwing a fit in the back right now. Um, but, uh, hold on, uh, sorry, six-year-olds. Um, so I've had a lot of thought about things like for future parks that we've already had planned. I think that we should talk about putting signs on that land that say something along the lines of home of future park. Um, really, because it sounds like this park has always been planned and in development, and it was a part of the approval when the subdivision was built. But when these people bought this land, they also paid extra because they were told that this green space was never going to be developed, and now, surprise, it's going to be a park. So I, I'm wondering if it would behoove us as a city to sort of facilitate or mediate some sort of a meeting between the developer or the realtors and some of our citizens who feel like they've been kind of double-crossed or, uh, you know, fish, uh, what's the bait and hook or bait and switch? I, I really was very surprised that all of this was coming up at a Parks and Recreation Committee meeting, and I wanted you guys as a council to be aware of it, because there have been a lot of things going through my head since that meeting happened, and, um, I just wanted you guys to be aware of what was said, and again, encourage you to go back and watch those meetings.
Yeah, I appreciate that update on the Parks and Rec, and at the same time, I also think that's a great idea that we get together with the, uh, public in an open forum and to have a discussion based on that. So everybody's on the same page as when we discussed that whole part, because I remember when we had it, but obviously people have forgotten or people weren't involved, so I want to make sure that we get everybody on the table.
Yeah, the, the Parks and Rec Commission made a couple more recommendations on, because they've been um, working on the concept plan for it, which is great, because then there's a picture and people, once you can see a picture, people start to get involved, and so they kind of, they've been molding it. They had a couple more recommendations for the concept plan, and I think they'll be finalizing their recommendation um, at their meeting at the end of the month. I'm meeting on Thursday with the Chair of Parks and Rec, um, and then it will come to the council to be adopted or not, um, or, you know, or modified, make right, you guys could make recommendations, but we're, um, it has always been planned to be a, a park. It will not be developed into homes, which is, I don't know what the, it will not be developed means, uh, probably different things to different people, uh, but we are trying to um, accommodate those people in that area, because they do have some, you know, concerns with too many people coming into the neighborhoods, um, you know, how, how close the amenities are to the homes, and so we're working on that, and it will be something that comes to the council, um, to look at, to talk to people about, so.
Good, great, thank you. Uh, Joel?
Um, is it possible that we can actually get a workshop with the Parks and Rec before we have that come to the council, so we can actually have some discussion with them about concerns, and then is it even possible to do like a listening session directly with the public? Before we get to that point, so we can have all that taken into account, before you kind of have to bounce it back and forth between Parks and Rec. But it sounds like this is a pretty big hot button issue. I saw it on Facebook going over the last couple of weeks. So I think to try to head off a lot of the delays and to get involved with them, if we can have a listening session and then a work session with the Parks and Rec, to come together some sort of intermediate agreement before we take it into council for this decision-making.
Okay, yeah, let me check with the Parks and Rec Chair and see how, um, how that we could facilitate that. Um, I think they're trying to do the legwork for the council so that the council doesn't necessarily have to get into those, um, you know, revisions and reviews of all that, um, and they have been hearing from, from community members, um, but that, maybe that is, um, a workshop would be a good good suggestion. So let's, let me talk with the Chair of the Parks and Rec and see how, and I'll talk with you, mayor, and see how we can pull this all together.
Sounds good, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, Jerry, I don't know, did I call on you, Jerry? Did you have anything to add to? Okay, great. Well, I think that's everybody there. So we're going to be at the City Managers Report, and I know you wanted to share that with Lieutenant Mendoza.
Yes, I want to, actually, um, I didn't catch him when he came in, but I wanted to introduce Lieutenant Mendoza. We have a super here. Um, because we have people on Zoom, um, and in the room, we need to use the microphone, so. Um, yeah, I will yield my city manager time, report time to, um, Lieutenant Mendoza. He's our police chief, and we've been, um, working on plans for future, um, plans for summer, and I'll just, um, kind of let Lieutenant Mendoza share what he would like to share and, and, and kind of introduce himself to you all.
Good, thank you.
Sure, uh, it sounds good. Thanks for having me, um, Lieutenant Marcus Mendoza, Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. Um, very happy to be here in person for the first time. Thanks for having me. Um, I, a little bit about myself, I've been at the Sheriff's Office for about thirteen years now, uh, in, in total, about twenty-two years in law enforcement. Um, I manage a lot of the special units at the Sheriff's Office, and then, as, as you know, I'm also responsible for the, the contract here in Estacada. Uh, so it's been a great opportunity so far, and, and working with Melanie has been, has been great. I've, uh, enjoyed the, the council meetings that I've been at, uh, on Zoom, so I'm hoping to be here in person a lot more often. Um, and hopefully you found the, uh, responses to your questions adequate, and and if not, just ask again, and I'll, I'll make sure that I, I get you a good response.
Yeah, why don't you just, um, kind of tell us a little bit about what your future plans are for Estacada, because, you know, as you all know, we've had a little bit of an increase in crime, and, and we know a little bit of that's due to other things that are going on, obviously, but uh, what is the, the Clackamas Department going to do in the future as far as Estacada is concerned? So you got to give us a little outline.
Sure, um, well, so across, um, I think law enforcement in general, and, and really is, is probably most of us know, just any profession at this, at this moment, staffing is, is a big issue. Um, so that's, uh, that's the same a- at the Sheriff's Office. We are working to increase our staffing there, uh, which will then also allow us to increase staffing here in the city of Estacada. I know the council has asked about that, uh, previously about staffing and, and where should we go for staffing levels for a city this size? That's clearly a, a concern for the council, and, um, we've already increased, uh, here it was, um, uh, back in March, we increased, uh, to a full, uh, three FTE for deputies in the city of Estacada and plan to, uh, increase again in the future. We're waiting on uh, currently have the request in, excuse me, have a request in for an additional deputy. Um, the way that that works is the request goes in, and then, um, the training process takes some time, so per the contract for all of our contract cities, we will, uh, provide a deputy after a certain amount of time, and, and what's been agreed upon at this, uh, moment, it appears to be about a year. Um, we'll have an additional deputy. With the population growing, uh, above five thousand and, and uh, continuing to grow, I guess one thing that I can appreciate that the council brought up, uh, here a few months ago is, is projecting several years out, because that's, that's really what we have to do when we're looking at adding, uh, full-time positions. We probably need to start thinking about where else we can add, um, or when we can add deputies, and knowing that it takes a year to train somebody to get them, uh, here in the city, uh, we're looking at projecting a few years out. Um, my suggestion would be uh, once we realize, uh, that, that incoming deputy to bring us to the four FTE that we start looking at uh, requesting another one, which would then take us to, uh, that five FTE for deputies. If uh, another thing to consider, uh, with, with that many staff is then we need to also have a supervisor, uh, for those staff. Generally, the Sheriff's Office likes to keep the, um, supervisory ratio of, of four to six deputies to one sergeant. Um, so when we hit, uh, five FTE, that's probably about the time where, where we'd be bringing on a supervisor as well, or a sergeant. Um, I don't believe that the, uh, the chief position here, uh, would change much. Uh, currently, it's a, it's a point five or a, a point one five, fifteen percent FTE. Um, I could see that increasing maybe by, um, up to twenty to twenty-five percent, depending on how much time needs to be allotted to the city contracts. That would be my suggestion, and then of course, um, the, the recommendation from the city council of, of how exactly you would like to staff, uh, the city of Estacada. Uh, when you get to uh, about five deputies, there are scenarios where you could have twenty-four hour coverage. Um, and so that's probably the, the number where you're, you're really trying to get to, and it's also the number where the Sheriff's Office contracts as a whole, where you move from a part-time contract to a full-time contract, um, which are slightly different, but it would be similar to the contracts or the same as the contracts with the city of Happy Valley and the city of Wilsonville. Um, and those, those changes would essentially be, um, if a, if an employee is not, uh, calls in sick on vacation, some, some sort of leave, then the employee would be replaced, uh, with overtime, whereas, uh, the current contract on a part-time basis, it's not replaced because we don't provide full-time services, if that makes sense. Um, so those are, those are some considerations where you would see the, uh, what you'd have to budget for. Those positions would go up dramatically in that five to six range, but you'd also be moving to full-time coverage.
And I really think that's really the end goal here, is that we get coverage full-time to handle the growth that we're seeing. Um, I'm sure we got a couple of questions here, so I'm going to start off with Jerry up there. He's got his hand up. Uh, for you, if that's okay.
Uh, hi, Chief Mendoza. Sorry, I'm not there in person tonight. Um, so my question is, is there a recommended ratio, um, officers per capita? Is there a recommended ratio for, you know, a town like us? Is it, you know, one per thousand, or, I mean, you know, is there a, is there a number that we can, you know, keep in mind as we're mo- as we move forward?
Yeah, so that's a great question. Um, and, um, I actually learned this recently when I was looking into this for the city. Um, the, the officer per capita per thousand, uh, is actually a ratio that is, um, is kind of an older ratio that was used or figured for cities to determine how many police officers or deputies that, that they should have for their population. Uh, what's, uh, what it seemed now is a, a better measurement is a response time, and, um, what, what we could, what I could tell you, and, and I'm pulling these, this was a few months ago that I was looking at it, so I'm going to tell you what I'm pulling off the top of my head. Um, at the, at the time, um, when the times where you do have, uh, a deputy that's working in the city, uh, your response time to a priority one or priority two call is fairly low or on par with what any city in Clackamas County is, is receiving. The times when you don't have a deputy that's assigned to the city of Estacada or, or a city police officer here, um, your response times go up dramatically. Um, and so that is what we would want to address, um, and what we would be fixing with adding staff on a twenty-four hour basis, uh, twenty-four hour, uh, basis. The uh, the caveat to that, that, that it would say is like you still have a response time. It's just you're getting your response from a county deputy who could be anywhere between, um, for our East County Deputy, could be working anywhere from Colton to Beaver Creek, um, or halfway to Sandy and be responding to the city of Estacada, uh, for those priority one calls. Whereas if you had a deputy that was assigned to the city, they're going to be generally within the city limits or nearby, uh, and responding to those emergency calls. So we would want to base, um, that decision on how many deputies are contracted um, by what the, the council feels is appropriate for a response time.
Great, thank you. Does that answer your question, Jerry, or is there anything you'd like to add to?
No, that, you know, that, that, it did, it, it answered my question, so, um, yeah, I was just curious on that, so, but thank you.
Thank you. Joel?
Um, I got a few questions. Um, kind of, I'll bounce off the one that Jerry put out there, uh, sorry, Councillor, um, Tenbusch out to put out there. The first one is, um, I know that for like priority one calls, uh, that your department is usually a two officer response time for those. Um, so how are we accounting for that type of response time when we're having maybe a single deputy on um, on staff twenty-four hours? Priority two, priority three might be able to respond to those easier, but domestic, things like that, I know that you'd have a second officer code uh, back, backup before you can run to those things. So how do, how are we balancing that out? How should we be looking for that in the future, because again, you said, uh, second officer or county officer could be all the way in Beaver Creek or something before they can come out here?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, and it, and it doesn't matter who that second officer is, um, during the, during the day, obviously, just, you know, anywhere you go, there's a lot more resources. Um, an example is, uh, during the day, we have also a school resource officer here who's, um, at the hu- at the high school, uh, most of the time, and so he would be closer, um, last week, um, um, last week I was here, uh, in the office and, um, uh, did a traffic stop just around the corner, and a, um, a deputy that does civil process, uh, came to that traffic stop. So there's, there's, there's other officers kind of flowing through the area as well, uh, Oregon State Police is also nearby, and so those are other things that we have to consider when we look at when the second officer is arriving, where they're coming from, and it could be that everyone's busy and no one's in this area, and so they're coming from further away, so you're absolutely right. Um, but the response times are generated, um, really by, by computer. When the deputy, um, arrives on a call, he'll do one of two things, and he'll either advise over the radio that he's arrived or push a button on his computer to, to denote that he arrived. If we say it over the radio, dispatch will do that for him, and it captures the amount of time, so we can get those, those precise times from, uh, from dispatch and from our, our CAD system on when, when the call came in, when the call was dispatched, when the deputy went en route, and when the deputy arrived. We may not be able to go in, or, or best practices maybe are that we don't go in until the, we have a cover officer there or a cover deputy there. Um, but we can look at the time of, of arrival of the second, um, the second deputy or second officer, if that makes sense. But when we, I guess when the, the timer stops is when that first officer or deputy arrives. Uh, depending on the call, they may stage nearby and wait, wait for the cover, so that could delay that time. Um, but yeah, all those are, are really just real-life factors that go into figuring out what that time is, and you're really looking at an average over a large or a, a, a long period of time, maybe, um, six months or a year gives you a, a, a good response time average.
Okay, uh, I know some of the, uh, information I've talked to Sheriff Brandenburg about in the past has been looking at trying to push like a, um, a reserve officer type of, uh, program, or at least try to have the Sheriff's Office push it to get reserve officers out in the cars, because that can be considered a second officer, so increase the response time. Is that something that you guys would want to look at pushing, or that the city council could help with?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, we definitely want to increase, uh, and improve our reserve, uh, deputy program, and, um, not only re- reserved deputies, but, uh, full-time deputies, and, and I, you know, we're always, we're always preaching, if you know someone, um, that's interested in law enforcement, uh, encourage them to apply, you know, it's the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office is a great, um, organization, and we're, we're always looking for good people.
Excellent. Uh, one last question. Um, as we're going into the, uh, to the seasonal time, um, obviously our school officer is not going to be there anymore, so that's one of the coverage things that will be coming off, but um, just today, I, I know I was watching the traffic a little bit out here by our stoplight, um, and I noticed within a fifteen-minute period, we had a lot of out-of-towners are rushing through, they're blowing through the stoplight, three red light in fifteen minutes. What's, um, and they're speeding constantly through here. What's the plan you have to try to control and deal with some of the traffic coming through here during the seasonal time? To try to avoid that, or to try to, you know, take care of some of that traffic issues and
Sure.
running the red light and so.
Yeah, I think, I think definitely, um, you're going to see more of that, because as we all know, May first, um, the two twenty-four corridor opened up. Uh, one of the things that, uh, happened, I also manage our, uh, Forest Service contracts, and so we have a deputy that's assigned to the work in the Forest Service and help, um, their law enforcement. Um, so that's another deputy that would be out in this area or in, in the Forest Service, he's responsible for other areas as well. Uh, we also, um, uh, employed some deputies on overtime, um, with a contract from the Forest Service specifically for Highway two twenty-four from Estacada, uh, east. Um, that was happening in the month of May, um, I believe that the Forest Service wants to continue, um, increasing those patrols, and so that's one way that we could address that issue. Um, the Sheriff's Office has a, um, a county, uh, traffic enforcement team, the, the deputies on motorcycle. That was one of the things that, um, I'd spoken with the city manager about, um, asking that team to come out to Estacada uh, every now and then to provide some traffic enforcement. Uh, the Highway two twenty-four is, I believe is what you're mentioning out here. Um, that is, um, it is, obviously it's important to the city, and it's within the city, it's also the jurisdiction of the Oregon State Police. So we can also ask the Oregon State Police to come out to do some extra patrols on the highway, knowing that we're going to see an increase of, of vehicular volume, uh, on the highway, as, as I'm sure we do every, every summer.
Uh, what about some unmanned options such as, uh, addition, we have a photo radar for our city itself, but what does the Sheriff's Office have to help? Um, maybe, I know there's some camera-based, uh, ticketing trailers you guys have had, seen in the past, so do we have something like that we could consider for the seasonal period or something?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, we don't, we don't have at the county, we don't have a, a camera ticketing option, but we have the, uh, photo, or excuse me, the, uh, the radar trailers, um, and we could, um, definitely bring one out, and that, um, statistically, that shows it does slow people down and, and get people thinking about, um, uh, obeying traffic laws.
Might be helpful. Thanks.
Sure.
Okay, Jared?
Um, so I know that you're, I know that coverage is super thin, and you're definitely wanting the new hires. Would it be quicker if you, say you got an influx of laterals, would that then sort of hasten the process of getting an extra body out here?
Uh, it would, absolutely. And, and briefly, I would say it takes from, to train a new recruit, uh, from beginning to end is about eighteen months, and a lateral could be a matter of I, I think we can get them through as, as little as fifteen weeks of, uh, field training. Um, so there's a huge difference there. So yes, if we add influx of laterals, then, then that would help us out dramatically, and they can fill the seats very quickly. That, I guess the struggle is everyone's, uh, looking to attract those laterals that are very willing to move at the moment, so we're, we're kind of, uh, in a spot where we're battling against everybody else. So we're, we're kind of uh, in a spot where we're battling against everybody else.
Good, great. Thank you for that question. Any other questions? Katie, do you have anything you want to add to that? No? All right. I I just had one. I noticed that, you know, like in my neighborhood, we have a lot of old neighborhood watch signs that are still up. None of these neighborhood watches have been instituted from what I can tell. They're all just lying dormant. So does the county have a program that we could maybe initiate? Uh, some training out here, get these things back up and running because, you know, we are reaching that critical point with all these neighborhoods. And I know it's hard for you to cover every inch of it. But these neighborhood watches being what they are would be a valuable tool if we could institute that back into play. Is there some kind of training that the the county has that they could bring somebody out and maybe help us get these instituted?
Yeah, ab- absolutely. We have a a crime prevention officer with a um. Um, she's a CSO with her office, but that is exactly what she specializes in. And we could set up some of those meetings and and revive those programs out here. Uh, I tell people all the time that we can't do this uh. Without you, right? We can only be in so many places. Um, uh, well, we're going to only be at one place at a time, but. You're right. So if we have extra eyes and ears out there, people letting us know when they see something suspicious. And they call and say, hey, this, you know, can you come check this out? That that just gives us that that nudge or that hint of where to go and what to look for. Um, so yeah, we could, couldn't do without the public.
Good, good. So we'll, we'll try to get that back online, get people interested in that. Uh, we appreciate everything you brought to us tonight. It's great to see you in our council chambers.
Yeah.
Um, and being a part of it because it gives us a better um. Vocal point for our audience. You know, it's one thing for us to say and it's another to hear it. And you being here is very important to us. So we thank you for that tonight. Are there any more questions before we let him off the hook?
Do you, do you got a business card with your contact information on it so we can reach you if you have any questions rather than waiting every to our next council meeting or something?
Yeah, I believe I have one in my car.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, uh, would you like to say something, Melanie, since it is your time?
Um, actually, no, I I don't have anything else to report on other than just thinking of the um. Neighborhood watch, maybe that's something that would be helpful where um, she could come out and talk with our traffic and public safety. Committee when that gets up and running this summer, um, you know, that might be a good, that they could be a good um, voice up to encourage communities to do that. So.
Good idea. Jerry, you got something else you want to add?
Um, yeah, this question is actually for Melanie. So um, I paid, I I've paid a lot of attention to the uh, traffic coming in on Eagle Creek Road. Um, is there a way we can move that twenty five mile per hour, uh, that twenty five mile per hour speed limit sign? To to the end of, to where the Campanella Estates property begins coming into town? Because it's, it's, it's really far in before that first twenty five mile per hour speed limit sign comes up. It's really far in like, like almost, uh, it, it's like almost to the library by the time you see that first one. It's a, um, I think it's in front of the um, the U-Haul. Um, but is there a way we can like move that sign or add another sign at the end of the Campanella Estates? So people um, slow down, start slowing down earlier coming in on that road because it's, I mean, if they. People wait till the last minute to slow down coming in. So if we can move that out a little bit, you know, move it to the end of the Campanella. Um, estates there, I think it would be, it would, it would help out a lot in that area.
Yeah, thank you for that recommendation. I think that would be a great idea. I think that might be county jurisdiction. Um, but did you want to say something?
Yeah, we s- we started some conversations on that with the county um, sometime within the past year, I think. And um, it sounds like there is a process that we can follow. Um, because it goes down, if it transitions more than ten miles an hour, which it goes from forty five to twenty five. Um, by the county standards, that's too quick of a transition. So we are eligible for some, like at least like a thirty five mile an hour zone somewhere in there. Um, it's just a process that we have to go through. So I can make a note, I don't know, maybe I have to be directed to do that. But yeah, we can look and try to.
Pick that back up again, yeah.
Great. Thank you. That was a great question, Jerry. I appreciate that. Um, any other things before we move on here? No, everybody's good. Okay, great. Uh, sir, if you have to go, we completely understand. I know you're a busy man and we appreciate you coming in tonight, giving us your time.
Thank you.
All right, we are now the fun part of this meeting. Uh, we are now going to close the city council and open the public hearing. Um, I will read a little script to you here before we start this. I will now close the city council meeting and open the public hearing on um, annexation twenty twenty two dash zero three and annex tax lot. Three, four, E, two, one, zero, zero, two, oh, one. Um, do any members of the council wish to uh, to abstain or declare ex parte? I'm not seeing anybody. Okay, the council will now hear the staff report on this proposal. Taylor, that's you.
That is me. One moment while I. Send here. There we go. Okay, good evening, councilors. Um, so this is application file number twenty twenty two dash zero three dash annex, the planning commission. Um, let's see if I can get this out of the way for you. Oh, that's you. Thank you, Sadie. Uh, the planning commission has reviewed this proposal and forwarded the recommended approval to the council. Who will issue the final decision tonight unless it is appealed to Luba, the Land Use Board of Appeals. And so this presentation is a summary of the information in the staff report. Um, which addresses whether each of the individual criteria for approval are met. And it ultimately finds that all of the applicable criteria are indeed met and so therefore recommends approval. Alrighty, so the applicant is Scott Clayton with Cedar Ridge Homes, uh, together with their representative Ray Moore with all county surveyors and planners. The request is just to bring the property into city limits. They are not proposing any zone change from what is designated in the comp plan map. And they're also not proposing any development, but they did include um. For our information, preliminary layouts for the intended future development. So um, to be clear. Uh, the city is legally required to base their decision tonight only on the criteria for annexations, not on any of the criteria for. Uh, subdivision, even though we do know they intend to develop eventually, that will be a separate uh, application process. Alright. So we're looking at almost ten acres of property. It's just west and south of the Current Creek Estates, phases one and two. I also realize I didn't say the property address out loud. I don't think so. Apologies. It is three, zero, nine, zero, one. Southeast Lawrence Road. Make sure that's in the record here. So almost ten acres of property. Um, right next to Current Creek Estates, phases one and two. It does abut city limits on its eastern and northern property lines, and it is also. Um, abutting the urban growth boundary uh, in the eastern part of the, of the UGB. And so that eastern property line is right on Lawrence Road, which is, you know, which runs right along the UGB. And just a reminder about our urban growth boundary. Um, every city in the state of Oregon is required by law to adju- to adopt a UGB. Um, and so land within our UGB is basically entitled to develop as long as it meets certain criteria. And we're going to review those criteria for the annexation uh, in just a minute. So, but for illustration purposes, I'm putting the zoning map up on the screen. The UGB is the red dotted line and all of the white parcels are unincorporated. All of the colored parcels are um, within city limits. And so. The establishment of that UGB basically means that all of those white parcels are intended to eventually come into city limits. Um, whenever the property owner chooses to do so, and then through a separate application process, intended to eventually develop with. Whatever uses and standards are allowed in the zoning um, that is shown on the comp plan map. In a, that's a very simplified uh, way to describe it, but that's it in a nutshell. So uh, looking at the approval criteria for annexations, they must be. An annexation must be found to be consistent with the applicable statewide planning goals, the applicable um, local comprehensive plan goals. And also our local development code requirements for annexations. So on this screen, we're looking at um, statewide planning goal ten and comprehensive plan, uh. I think our housing chapter is eight, um, can sit, yeah, chapter eight, housing consistency. Um, so statewide playing goal ten requires the city to have an adopted and state acknowledged plan for how its housing needs are going to be met. Over a twenty year period. Chapter eight of our comp plan um, accomplishes that requirement or meets that requirement by adopting housing related findings and policies. Currently, those include the findings from the twenty nineteen Clackamas County Regional Housing Needs Analysis. Um, and those findings show that Estacada has a need for all housing types in the next twenty years. Um, and then. Before I move on, so the, so the city has to determine whether this annexation serves the housing needs that are identified in. Um, those applicable chapters of our comp plan. And so looking at the zoning that is designated to be applied to this property. That's the low density residential zone, uh, which is just, will automatically apply upon annexation because it's already designated that way. And so that zoning will add to the city's inventory of land that allows for single family homes, ADUs and um. Duplexes, which can be allowed as conditional uses. All of those housing types were identified as needed in the adopted um. HNA findings. So for those reasons, this proposal is found to indeed meet the applicable statewide and comp plan goals. Looking next at the uh, the development code criteria for annexations. It must be, the property must be within the urban growth boundary. We confirmed that it is. It must be adjacent to city limits. Indeed, it is. Um. It must comply with the comprehensive plan goals that apply to it. We just talked about that. And with the designation that's in the comprehensive plan map. Um, so once again, they're not requesting a zone change from anything, you know, from what is designated in the map. They are just proposing to come in and be zoned as we've already designated. So yes, it is consistent with that. Um, item B here, it had um, adequate capacity of urban services. Must exist or be made available within three years of annexation approval. Um, and it goes into some details about the meaning of adequate capacity. The um, city engineer submitted a letter dated. Uh, February of twenty twenty two. Thought I had some information here. Yeah, sorry. Um, so city water and sewer system capacity were confirmed by the city engineer. In a statement dated February of this year, attesting to the ability of each system to accommodate any potential future development. Um, that letter is available in the exhibits attached to this report. And I just included some screenshots here um, in case anybody wants to see the highlights of that statement. Um, I can come back to this if you want to read into it, but the basics, you know, the takeaway is that. Um, yes, there is capacity to serve any potential future development, even though we're not approving the development with this application. And then the next note here, um, so there were some other criteria that we're going to get to. Um, but first, some information on um. The Oregon Revised Statute, section one nine seven point three zero seven, section four. Uh, I think it was twenty seventeen when this was established, but I'm not positive, but um. It basically requires local governments to only apply. Quote, clear and objective standards, conditions and procedures um, to uh. In regulating the development of housing. Um, and so. That rule um, applies to all of the land that's within. Um. All of the land that has a residential comp plan designation that's within our urban growth boundary. And so that would include the subject property. Um, there's nothing in that ORS section that. Uh, cites an exclusion or exception for land that's not yet annexed into city limits. Um, and so. Our annexation code, which regulates the development of residentially designated designated land, needs to have a clear and objective path for bringing land into city limits. Um, and so looking at this item C in that list of um. Approval criteria for annexation reads uh, that we need to have findings documenting the availability of police, fire, parks and school facilities and services. Shall be made to allow for conclusionary findings, either for or against the proposed annexation. The adequacy of these services shall be considered in relation to the annexation proposals. Um, so as many of you, many of you have heard before, there are a number of outdated sections of our development code. That are probably not legal for the city to apply, either because they're not clear and objective or because they contradict some other state land use law. Um, and so item C here would be one of those. And I've said before that the city can't deny annexation applications based on fire or school district capacity. And that those districts either need to accommodate whatever development occurs in. Um, you know, occurs within their boundaries, um, or they could impose, basically impose a moratorium on development. Um, but I, I should clarify that the, this clear and objective requirement from the ORS. Could allow for cities, I think maybe I'm, I'll look at Peter here. I think it could allow for the city to consider school or fire district capacity as a criteria for annexations, but. Our code would need to vary specifically and measurably, um, you know, define what. Capacity and adequate mean for those facilities and services. So um, anyway, I will still know, I'll still, I'll still respond to these, you know, this code section and say, police services are provided by the county sheriff. And our contract with them is adjusted in response to the growing need. Um, the fire district did receive notice of this application and did not have concerns. Um. For parks, our code does not have any clear standards or requirements for park provisions that we could attempt to base a statement on. Although I think we would all agree that we should probably adopt some um, park standards. Um, and then the school district did provide a statement in support of this annexation. In um, that was provided in the submittal. So even if that code section is not legal to apply, it is met to the extent um, that is possible with our current ordinance. And so I'm now going to go to the testimony received. Um, we received testimony from uh, John Reef, Tracy and Christie Jackson and Mary Etheridge. Um, and I've also included some correspondence with um, councillor Strobel, um, which I'll get to at the end here. Okay, I, I, thank you. Um, and so John Reef, I think also is going to be reading his own testimony, but um. I do have it printed out, John, if you are here, so I can read it if not. Um, but the, a summary of the concerns there is that the city is not considering the ramifications of rapid growth. Um, concern that approval of annexation equals approval of development. Uh, that city water and sewer systems will not have capacity to support the future development. Questions about the methodology and validity, validity of the city engineer's statement of capacity. And questions about the authority of the state to overrule our municipal code. Um, and then Mary will also read her uh, testimony aloud. And then um, I will read testimony from Tracy and Christie Jackson here. Uh, it reads, when we bought our new home at uh, twelve twenty eight Northeast Moore Ave in October of twenty twenty one. We were specifically told that the property behind us would never be sold and that we therefore didn't need to worry about the trees. Being cut down and that land being developed. We were therefore extremely shocked and saddened to find out that just a few months later. The property had indeed been sold and the forty one new homes were planned for that site. This is in addition to the shocking expansion already taking place in Current Creek Estates in just the few months that we've been here. Had there been. Had there been small acreage available outside of town when we were looking, we would have bought it, but there wasn't. And we understood Kern Creek Estates to be about done with building in the area. Now, we and all our neighbors around us are very upset that the rural character of Estacada is being swallowed up by huge housing developments with small lots and trees mowed down to build ever more homes. Covering the hillsides with house on top of house isn't appealing to anyone. We've not spoken to one person who is in favor of this uncontrolled expansion. Yet what voice do the residents have? How is the planning commission planning for green spaces and maintaining or upgrading the physical beauty of the area? Furthermore, is anyone checking that the developers are creating quality neighborhoods? We continue to have problems with drainage in our yard, as do neighbors all around us, and water continually flows down the streets of Kern Creek Estates with no solution to date from the developers. Please take the concerns of the residents of Estacada seriously as you consider the matter at hand. Changing the property under consideration will not benefit the residents of the community. And then the additional correspondence from councillor Strobel um was related to these three questions, and I'm gonna go through them. Does the, does annexation automatically lead to a subdivision development? No, it does not. Annexation is a prerequisite for a subdivision, but there are all kinds of extra criteria that have to be met in order to subdivide um that we don't evaluate at the time of annexation unless the applicant bundles their applications. Um, we have had instance, plenty of instances where properties get annexed, but don't come in for um development. Um, yeah, I'll stop there. Question two was about um addressing wetlands. Um, and yeah, wetlands, it uh were not required to, or it's not part of the approval criteria for annexation to address wetlands. Um. But this question is about how does the city still address those valid concerns? Um, and so just for your information, the baseline data sources for wetlands and riparian data are the National Wetlands Inventory and also the statewide wetlands inventory. Um, we check those inventories during the subdivision process or so whatever development review. Um, and ideally, what a lot of cities do is they conduct their own local wetlands inventory and they take those findings and they update their comprehensive plan with whatever policies they wanna do, you know, whatever policies the council wants to adopt around protecting those habitats or resources. Um, and then you update your code to implement those policies. Um, so that's a project the city could pursue. And then the third question is, how are the criteria for annexations and subdivisions established? Are they determined by the city, county or state? And if we are directing people to address the criteria, where should they go? Um, so basically the state determines the parameters for the city to determine the criteria. So the city sets the criteria, but there are limits to what the city can require. Um. And oh, sure, yeah.
I, I just wanna say something because I think a lot of people remember back when cities had what would be called dual voting on annexation. And so people in an annexation area, whether they petitioned or if it was a larger um group, they got to vote. And then residents in the city got to vote too. And so the city could say, we get to decide whether um, whether we're going to continue growing at the rate. Maybe they weren't comfortable with the rate of growth. There were a lot of reasons why no vote could happen. And it, the, the change in state law was referenced tonight, and, and I believe that was in twenty seventeen. Um, and basically the legislature did what's called preemption, so they preempted local law and told us what the law would be. Um, and that allows them to basically, if, if there's an emergency, it allows them to do that. Um. An example is because we have Matt Molitas, who's a LLC board member for a later agenda item. The state dictates what a bottle of Smirnoff will sell for. And it sells for that price in every liquor store in the state, regardless of whether it's used by a hospital for detox tremens, for someone in their own house or a bar. And so that's an example of the state saying, we get to decide because this is a emergency area of concern. So due to what the state termed our housing emergency, they got to say, no cities, you can't have that second vote on annexation and create these criteria, which is you have to have clear and objective findings on whether you can provide urban services, and they really narrowed what those were. And then they said, if they meet them, you have to, you have to annex. Now, then there's a second step in that, and that's when they actually come in for development review. Um, and in, in that, people have a lot more discretion into what allow, and you also get to require what are called exactions. So that's the city saying developer, in exchange for developing, you're gonna have to do these things in order to make sure that um this is the type of development that we want, to the extent that there are water issues or other issues. It would be coming up with through remediation plans, so those aren't injuring existing homeowners. So where a lot of times in this process, you have very little discretion in that process, as long as in the, the two, the United States Supreme Court tests, uh, one involves a city attire called Dolan, and the other one was out of California, it's called Nolan. And what they said is that there's a nexus in what, there needs to be a nexus in what you're requiring in the development. And that any exactions need to be roughly proportionate to the benefit that you receive. But you, as a city council, have a lot of a lot more discretion in that process. And neighbors who have strong feelings about that sort of development have a lot more ability to influence in this. And so basically, the legislature made this the exact opposite of how it used to be. It used to be the city on this step could say, we're gonna prevent this annexation, and that's gonna allow us to prevent that development. And then you didn't have to have conversation number two and use all these tools. But because they took that away and basically said, if there's a record for urban services, you gotta let them in. Then what I, as a city attorney, has been practicing long enough that I used to have a full head of hair um, have noticed is that the, the, the fight happens at the development hearings versus now. And there are probably people in the audience that remember back when you used to get to vote on annexations. Um, because I believe we voted on them here in Estacada. Yeah, we did. I remember that. Um, and, and so I a lot of people aren't aware that the law changed and that the ability of the public to impact this kind of changed with it. So I, I wanted to, I thought Taylor did a good job touching on that, but I just wanted to clarify it for people that remember the old system.
All right, thank you, Peter.
Thanks. Gave me an opportunity for a water break. Um, the other thing that I wanted to say in response to this question is um where do people go if they want to address the criteria? Um, and so the approval criteria are always listed in the public notice for any application. It's also in the staff report. The staff report is organized according to the approval criteria. That report doesn't get published until one week before the hearing, so um, if they want to look at the approval criteria before that, they should um look at the um public notice that goes out. Okay, so we are at the recommended approval, finding that um this proposal appears to meet all applicable criteria. Recommendation is approval with these five um conditions of approval. One of them is new since the staff report, and that is just that the applicant provide documentation of ownership of the subject property. That is because um staff's understanding is that they're, they at least were under contract to buy the property. Um, and so we just need to make sure that they are the property owner before, before uh finalizing that annexation. And so um the way that that will work is that these conditions will need to be met before we bring the annexation resolution to, back to the council that puts the annexation into effect. Okay, I think we're ready for questions. And then um if the applicant, I think the applicant's on Zoom, so they'll have an opportunity for presentation. If they want to add anything, then we can go to the public comments.
Okay, so let me read this uh prior to that. Uh, I'm gonna read a statement about evidence presented at the hearing. And into which, which may be a basis for an appeal to Luba must be raised prior to the close of record at the final eventuary hearing in the specific application. Such issues shall be raised with sufficient specificity so as to afford Luba and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. Failure of an issue to be raised at the hearing or in person or by letter or failure to provide sufficient specificity to afford Luba and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to Luba on that issue. Okay, and uh the applicant is here. Taylor?
Yeah, I believe he's on Zoom. Scott, there he is.
Scott, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Sure can.
Sorry, guys, I'm a little under the weather today, so I didn't want to come in person, but uh I want to thank mayor and council for taking the time on this and Taylor for the staff report. And uh I think Taylor pretty much summed it up, but I just wanna kind of reiterate what she's saying is uh you know, we're, this is annexation only. There's no subdivision proposal on this. And uh we did listen and uh to the neighbors and the people that give testimony at the planning commission. We've had uh, I don't have the reports back yet, but we had wetland environmental people out there last week. I'm waiting for their reports, but you know, all development will be done within the state laws regarding wetlands and uh and any environmental issues. Uh. I think that's, you know, pretty much it for me. Uh, if you have any questions, I'm here.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Are there any questions for Scott from council? Uh, Katie?
Scott, thank you for taking the time to join us this evening. Um, and I'm, I'm gonna ask this question, I'm not trying to attack, but I guess I would really like to hear a statement from you or comment um in response to some of the correspondences we've received from the citizens who are currently living in your subdivision. It sounds like there was a level of miscommunication about the future of the development that is being communicated to the people purchasing homes. Um, as well as there, there, it sounds like there are already concerns that people are having when it comes to uh some of the stormwater. I, I, I'm curious to hear what your impression of those statements are and, and I guess hoping for you to elaborate a little bit.
Uh, yeah, I'm not exactly sure on the stormwater. I know that there was some things that uh we're looking into and trying to get resolved as far as wet yards and stuff like that. Um. And as far as somebody saying that that can never be developed, I have no idea where that came from. It never came from me. Uh. I'm not sure where that came from. I mean, clearly the land is within the UGB. Uh, I don't know why anybody would say that. It certainly didn't come from me.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, any other councils have questions for Scott?
I have a question, not for Scott, but necessarily for some of the things from the report. So should I wait or?
No, go ahead.
So um I want to ask specifically about our sewer system, and I know that Kurt McLeod gave a pass on there, but I want to bring up a recent uh letter that he had written. Um, it's actually in our packet here. Um, and I had it up and I lost it. So one second. I hate these stupid things. Um. I just did it again. Yeah, I'm gonna try to bring up the email. He had on that. Uh, and this is right at the beginning of the email, and this has to do with uh something where we speak, we moved off the consent agenda. Right in the beginning, he says, the Estacada wastewater treatment plan has limited capacity to store wastewater sludge during periods of when land application sites are not accessible. That tells me right now we don't have capacity. And we have something that we'll be discussing later, but the, an intent to spend potentially up to six hundred thousand dollars try to fix this, but it could take up to a year to fix that minimum. Based upon the estimation, at least ten months, if not more. That tells me we don't have capacity now and we want for a year. So I would like to question the, what his statement are is having capacity in the sewer system right now. And question if that's an actual criteria that's been met. Because according to what we have here, as a letter dated June second, two thousand and twenty-two, we don't have it.
Well, the, the state standard for annexations is to be able to provide this service within a three-year period. So what, what they look to is, is kind of that. Um, and again, this would be criteria for the subdivision as well that would look at at the time that that a subdivision plan was brought in front of you as a council. But it's there are instances where there could be limited capacity, but if there's a plan for that capacity within the three-year period, then it would meet the state objective criteria. I, I'm not familiar enough with your, your sewer issues to say whether that's the case or not. I, I merely wanted to point out that the two different durations.
Okay. Uh, some more questions?
No, my concern is exactly what councillor Lickkey brought up, and that's our waste uh capacity in that we from what I'm hearing, you know, we are at capacity. I don't know if that would as far as annexation, just specifically annexation, I'm sure that doesn't, you know, affect how we as a council decide, but I mean, come on, it's gonna be developed or that's the, that's the plan. I'm, you know, assuming not just gonna buy it to buy it, so you know, my concern is how long is it gonna take to get our new treatment plan up and running and you know, I don't, I don't know. I'm, I'm just kind of looking for ways like do we need to put a moratorium on some of this building here pretty soon because I, I'm getting a lot of feedback from the community that it's a huge concern. It's a concern of mine as well. Um, I mean, I know growth is inevitable and we, there's only so much we can do as a council, but um yeah, I'm just, I'm just kind of looking for ways to kind of slow things down till, till we can get our wastewater up.
That's a valued concern, and, and, and on that note, I wish to speak before, and I'll let you go. Uh, that was my question as well. On the moratorium, as far as building goes, what are we talking about moratorium? How long does that consist of? And it's not just our sewer plant that we're talking about here. It's our water. I understand that finding shares of water is an issue now, and we need more water to serve people. So it's not just the sewer plant, it's the water plant. And then when we talk about our officer being here, we're not the full-time officers yet. From what I understand, that's got a year out, maybe two years. So you have another deficiency there. Then you have the school district, which is put in trailers to accommodate new students. So it seems to me that we've hit every part of that criteria of infrastructure that you can hit, but yet we're not asking the question, when do we slow down? So my question is, can we, or is there, what, what is the, the, the moratorium on, on building? So we can assure that we've, you know, met that.
Yeah, so I don't know if Peter, you wanna jump in?
I mean, we can, we can kind of tag team this one. Um, so the, a moratorium might be possible. We'd need to make very, very specific facts, and, and I don't, again, I, I staff and I talk about growth and we talk about capacity and we talk about those conversations and, and it seems like we're, Estacada's nearing the outer edge. Um, but the, the process that we have to go through to declare that moratorium would would require some expert reports and some just very technical findings that um that you would make, because anytime you're taking someone's ability away to, to develop or utilize their land, you know, that city councils need to make sure that that's done really thoughtfully and, and the state laws are set up to, to do that. So um, we would need to circle in with the experts and, and really look at those capacity and talk about how many units there would be before you get there. I mean, that if you were to get an apartment complex or something like that, that I think the city kind of wants, that takes a lot more capacity maybe than, than other things. So we'd kind of have to look at the different types and what the triggers will be to have that. And I think then we could have that conversation. I don't know if the facts support it today. Um, but it could before, before um, for too long, it could happen for sure.
Okay, cool. Um, so a couple of things. Uh, first of all, one of the pieces I also had in my notes here besides the sewer system, and you can grab where I was heading towards that question. Um, the second part was, I'd like to know, one last one, we've had an actual traffic study done in our city for the growth, the gross population growth that we've had recently, and how is that impacting on uh, not just the collector roads, but also the, the smaller roads as well? And especially like Lawrence Road, how's that gonna impact that? Things like that, I, I'd like to know. Things like that, I, I'd like to know, have we had a traffic study done the last year, two years, five years, 10 years? How we looked at what all this impact is going to have on that, not only on the, on the safety, but also on the, the expense to maintain those roads. And that's the first one I had, and to get back to, just to touch on the sewer system. When I first came onto the council almost a year and a half ago, I said the same thing that what I said, it, we have about a year and a half. Until we start running into capacity issues in the, in this, that's why I pushed the sewer system then. And here we are a year and a half later, we're running into the problems that was predicted a year and a half ago. So we, we need to do something, because if we let another, another year and a half go by. It's going to be far beyond, we're going to be out already, and we're going to be in a lot worse time, and we don't have a sewer system that's going to, I mean, a, a new sewer shirley plant that's going to be here in a year and a half. It's two, three years away, minimum, that takes a lot of process to get that done. So like Mayor Drinkwine has said, and like councillor Hughes has said. A moratorium is going to stop or slow that issue before it becomes a massive issue in the city. And it already is according to our own engineer, so. And we're having to put a, when we talk about a large purchase here, that we have to do and to fix and try to solve that issue in a short term. So let's get this conversation done now, or as many, as fast as we can before we run into the problems bigger down the road. But I'd like to hear about the traffic study information.
Yeah, so there've been a number of traffic studies done for the various developments that have come in. There was the, the largest traffic study done in recent, in my recent memory since I've been here. Was for the 2019 Economic Opportunity Analysis, which included, it was ordinance 2019-005. And it included, um, it rezoned, how many acres of land? Like two hundred, four hundred, a lot of land, um, and created those six new zones. Um, so there was a large traffic study that was done for that, but usually it's just, the traffic study is scoped for. Um, you know, whatever, whatever subdivision is being proposed. And then, you know, the, the various kind of intersections and corridors that relate to that area, so it's not like a citywide thing. We have just kicked off the transportation system plan update, and that is a citywide look at the projected, you know. Twenty years in the future growth of the city, so that's something where we're looking at that kind of high-level, long-range. Planning for how the city is going to develop according to whatever, whatever is zone or, you know, designated in the comp plan. Like what types of uses and intensities can we expect in these various areas? And looking at how the existing roads are functioning or not, you know, not meeting. Um, standards or level of service.
Uh, Jerry?
Okay, so my question's just clarifying what we're, what, what we're supposed to be making a decision on. So, um, my understanding, we're not supposed to be taking all of this stuff into consideration. And this, I might be wrong, but I want to make sure that we as a councillor are making a, a, a strong legal decision tonight that, you know, that we can, that we can back up. So, um, my understanding is we're not supposed to be taking all of this stuff into consideration, we're not supposed to be taking the subdivision or building into consideration. We're supposed to be evaluating the property as it stands, um, whether we want to annex that property into the city. Um, as it stands, not based on any future subdivisions. We can always, you know, come back to these questions when the subdivision does get proposed, and, you know, maybe slow it down or put a stop to it then. But I don't, I don't know that, I mean, and I might be wrong, but I don't know that we're supposed to be taking all of that stuff into consideration when we're talking about this annexation. I just want to clarify, because I want to, I want to make sure that, you know, I'm forming the right opinion and, and making a good decision. And that we all are forming an opinion and making a decision that we can legally stand on.
Right, so you have the letter from the city engineer stating there is capacity. You have, um, the letter from the school district in support of this. Um, you have the information on the water saying that there's adequate water. You have testimony, um, questioning, some testimony from members of the community questioning about whether that's the case. So the. The question for the state is, from the state is, can you provide it in three years? And, and the answer that the experts that avoid in have said is, is yes. I think that what generally my recommendation to the, to the council, when you have quote-unquote dueling experts or, or differing opinions. Is that you explain why, you know, some evidence is maybe stronger than others. And you know, that, a- as I said earlier, that it used to be that now was the time when kind of development could not happen. And that's not how the legislature set it up now, um, but to let people know that there, this is merely annexation. Um, that's a very different thing getting a, a subdivision. So, so the answer is, it's appropriate to consider the evidence, but you know, the evidence is what it is at this point.
Okay, thank you. Did that answer your question, Jerry? Yeah, okay. Uh, any other questions before we proceed? We have a lot of.
So you, your statement, uh, Peter, was that the, we have the letter stating that the sewer capacity is fine. But we have from the same person dated recently that it's obviously an issue there. So how do we approach that, that information?
So the letter from the engineer is that you have, within the next three years, you can expect to provide that urban service. So if, if there in fact is a plan, and I think a plan's been mentioned about adding capacity to the plant. Then that's something that the engineer would likely take into account when, um. When writing that letter, if, if when the subdivision comes in, the city is out of capacity. Because that fixer band-aid or whatever has, is an applied, that's the type of thing that would trigger a moratorium. So what he's saying is that the plan is to provide the urban services within the next three years, the answer to that question is yes. That might be different than the reality in a year and a half if a subdivision is, the application happens. So it's possible that both your concern that you'll be out of capacity a year and a half. In his statement that within three years, the urban service can be provided are both true.
I also think that we're in a, we're in a growth arc here, and it's a bit painful, especially for those of us who've lived here for a long time. And even for some of us who've just moved here recently, um, and if we stand and do nothing with our water and with our wastewater. Um, it will not be sufficient, and so that's why we're moving forward, that's why you're looking at that. Um, screw press equipment that we need to purchase, um, things are changing all the time with the requirements. For D E Q, to, how they regulate our wastewater, and it's getting more strict. And, um, the requi, the requirements to meet those things are changing, um, so we need to upgrade anyway. But if we, if we stand still and don't do anything, well, we won't, we will not be in a good spot. And that's why we're moving forward with, um, speaking to the Water Rights Board of people that we need to speak with. Also looking at adding equipment that would then be moved to the new plant, um, looking at moving forward with the plant. So, um, I'm not the engineer expert, but I do believe and have confidence in our city engineer. And like Peter said, like, you're, you're right, if, from where we're at right now, we don't do anything, we'll be out of capacity. Um, but because we're moving forward, we, we will be able to provide that, so.
True, right, that answers your questions, it's good, so I go on to the speaker's phones, yeah. Okay, Katie, go ahead.
Um, I did just want to give my two cents to everything that everybody has been saying. We have already approved, and the D E Q has also approved our new plan for our new wastewater treatment center. That is already moving forward, and we're already going to build it, and it's already going to cost a lot of money. I do want to throw out there that the, that the more people who end up ultimately using this wastewater treatment plant. The more people ultimately pay into it, which would then make that cost less to the rest of us. You know, when you've got so much of a pie, and when you split it between more people, it, it's less of a cost to everybody. So, you know, the S D Cs from development could also help pay for this plant that we're building anyways. Um, I just wanted to throw out there to you guys, when we talk about a moratorium on land in Estacada. You're, you're essentially a death sentence to what you, what your goal is for affordable housing. Because affordable housing is really, um, dominated by the basic idea of supply and demand. Well, when you put a moratorium on development and what you've got now is what you've got. Then you're going to increase the cost of all of that, and it's, and you're just going to kill affordable housing. Which is already kind of an almost dead concept as it is, you know, saying is how all the new houses are selling for four hundred thousand plus anyways. But, but if you put a moratorium, that four hundred thousand dollar house is going to be worth way more than that again. So I, I just really want everybody to use that word very cautiously moving forward. I don't want to see the city jump to a moratorium as being the response to this issue. I feel like the city is already seeing the issue and trying to respond to it by growing the services that we need to grow. To meet the needs of the growing population. Um, so I just wanted to give my two cents to that, I see this as, yeah, not, not, not a great thing. I've been here since two thousand and five, you guys, this isn't a great thing, but, you know, Estacada's changing, it has been changing. I watched Happy Valley do the same thing, but, but we need to remember that we are growing as a city with this growth. So, yeah, that's where I'm at.
Hey, thank you, Katie. Any other comments? Okay, I'm going to move on to the, uh, speaker request forms, if that's okay, is that, uh. You start that process, okay, at first I have Christie Jackson. Oh, okay, all right, I just want to give you opportunity, because I have, you've been. Okay, great, thank you. Um, we have Mary Eldridge.
Second, I just speak quick. Good evening, councillors, my name is Mary Etheridge, and I have resided at 31265 Southeast Lawrence Road for thirty-four years. I am opposed to the annexation of the nine point seven seven acres at 30901 Southeast Lawrence Road. Which is currently owned by my neighbor Marilyn Lloyd. Her property fence line lies thirty feet from the center of the creek, thus abutting current creek. I border on the southern end of Marilyn's property. I do not believe the applicant meets the criteria to apply for the decision of the annexation of the FF-10 property. It does not meet U G B's standards because of its known wetlands and a vulnerable wildlife habitat. My various meetings with Clackamas County, several discussions on surveying, planning and zoning and development ordinances. I have found inconsistencies and question for opposition to the clear cut of Lloyd's old growth. Nine point seven seven heavily forested land. My opposition number one, this ground is a wetlands by definition of the county wetlands is an area that is inundated or saturated. By surface or groundwater, and I've pictures shows that this, uh, property is that. This by law is under Clackamas County zoning and development ordinances. Referring to this property as a wetlands by definition and should be considered wetland. The bordering nine point seven seven forest has underground artesian springs that are perennial streams. Onto the surface soil even without rainfall in the summer months, these springs exist constantly. Marilyn Lloyd told me verbatim, my property has twenty underground springs. There is fresh water running through Marilyn's property. My opposition number two, there's native salmon and abundance of trout, bluegill and bass in that current creek. Along with other aquatic creatures, crodads, frogs, waters, stride, skippers, catas fly. My son and I just viewed a finger-length fish less than a month ago in Current Creek. Development near Current Creek, which allows only just fifty feet from the center line of the creek to the development. Would have a devastating impact on any of these organisms. The proposed annexation is on a slope, with each new development, Current Creek one and two, and the water running into catch basins. Not going in, not going into the creek, there is a lot less water dumping into Current Creek. Thus affecting the water levels from Current Creek one and two, there's hardly any water flowing back there at Current, for Current Creek. Um, looks like I better just end with, there's owls that are back there, lots of other wildlife. Um, has anybody walked the creek? You know, that's on my property, so I'm assuming no, because I have gotten no notification on that. I have, um, twenty signatures from people on Lawrence Road opposing further development. It, um, traffic has increased tremendously, I would oppose further development without addressing this traffic problem, thank you.
Thank you.
And here is pictures, notice from the overflow and the new developments with a bunch of water in there.
Uh, wait until after we get through these, and then you'll be able to put those through. All right, thank you. All right, next I have Phoenix, open.
Hello, my name is Phoenix Etheridge, I'm Mary's son, uh, live at the same house. I want to thank Peter for coming today, really helped, uh, set things straight in my mind, um, for. Just where the confusion is, why this is such a problem. But my, my real concern today is we were told to come here from our last meeting and that things would be resolved. And thing, instead, things got rehashed, and it was in fact an exact replica of the meeting we were at before. And I'm wondering why we were lied to, because we were told to come here today, and this would be the place where things would be solved. And for some reason, this was the exact same conversation we had before. I, I, I just think that's pretty messed up to lie some, some of the people that came last time and then waste their time. But again, so I, I want to know specific dates for when we can come back again and actually solve it. And not rehash the same, I mean, this is going to be voted yes, you're all going to vote yes, I already know that, because that's legally what you guys have to do. But I want, so we can come back and get more people to oppose this, I want to know the exact date that we can come. And, because we're going to come in numbers, there's going to be a lot of people to support what we think, so just please let us know at the end, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, uh, I think it's Larry, uh, Gilor? Guyer?
My name's Larry Guyer, my wife and I live at 30500 Lawrence Road, all the way at the end. Right across from where they're putting in Wally World. I know. My question is, and I don't know if I can ask you guys a question and you'll answer it.
Well.
We'll try, I'm, I'm, I'm wondering, like the gentleman up there said, you have to abide by the criteria. If he meets the criteria, your hands are tied, is there anything other? That you can do if he doesn't meet the criteria, to put this on a hold, to slow it down a little bit? Is you know what's going to happen, it's just going to go to the next level? And it just seems like it would be a lot easier if you slowed it down a little bit here. So that's, I guess, my question to you guys, so that we all know, is this pretty much a waste of our time? Because he does meet the criteria, I've got a Perry Mason defense here that I don't think I need to use if that's the way that it is. So that's my main question for you, what could you do to slow this down even if he does meet all the criteria?
Well, you know, that, that's a good question, I don't know what my fellow councillors will do.
Does anybody, the other, I don't know, is it even possible, once he meets the criteria, to say, you know what? We don't know where all the poop's going to go next week, we got to slow you down a little bit, is that possible?
Yeah.
Because you don't know.
So for the annexation application, that's what's, that's what they're deciding on tonight, they're not deciding on any future development. So if they find that all of the criteria are met, which it seems to be met. Then there's not, there doesn't seem to be a legal option for the city to deny the annexation. If the developer, um, or any developer comes in with a subdivision application. Um, and the application is complete, then whatever development code exists. And is established at the city at the time of that app. and is established at the city at the time of that application, the city has to issue a decision based on that development code. So where the public has the most power in terms of you know, taking those values that you're all talking about and those concerns and really changing the way that development is happening in in the city is updating the development code to capture those concerns. Ideally, that would happen by updating your comprehensive plan with policies and then you implement the policies through code amendments. But the city can adopt specific code amendments without necessarily updating its whole comprehensive plan or a whole chapter. So a code amendment is what I'm sorry to answer your question directly is the the fastest way for the community to get those concerns and values addressed is to update the code to address it so that whenever development does happen, you know, maybe we adopt creek buffers that address those concerns, for example.
So that's a no. There's nothing that we can say or do now to that that they can give a a an honest he's meeting all the criteria. There's nothing they can do now to deny.
Correct.
Annexation, right?
Correct.
So then why are we here? What good does it do to even have this meeting?
It's a legal requirement.
Okay, all right. Thanks for your time.
Okay, that is all the speaker forums that I have at this point. We're gonna move along. So does the staff have anything else to add?
I would just add with all this talk about a moratorium. I would add that even if we did pursue a moratorium and if if we were granted a moratorium, my understanding, and I'm not an expert, is that in order to maintain the moratorium, you have to continue. You have to show, you have to prove to the state that you are doing everything you can to resolve the capacity needs or the the deficit that that you're citing for the moratorium. Otherwise, no other things to add.
Okay, thank you, Taylor. Are there any more questions before I end this part of the conversation? I'm not seeing any. So at this time, I will now close the public hearing. Yep. Step up to the microphone. I'll give you three. I don't have a speaker form on you. I appreciate if you fill one out at the end just. All right, great.
Hi, my name is Kim Thompson. I live at five eight oh northeast west view lane here in Estacada. So I have a couple, just a couple of things on this annexation. One, I would like to know the actual definitive site address because in the paperwork it has two different addresses. One, in the proposal, it has one address of three oh nine oh one Southeast Lawrence. And then in the proposal, it says two nine 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 five Southeast Lawrence Road. So those are two different sites addresses.
That's my fault. That's a typo. It's this application is for three oh nine oh one.
Okay, my second question would be, has the DOR requirement been satisfied regarding the partition plat and the designation on the survey?
They have not. DOR has not approved the submittal. That requirement will, if they don't, if they don't get DORs, basically, we we can't adopt the resolution that puts this into effect until they get that approval from DOR. So they'll have to do that.
And then what about the easement from back in nineteen twenty that is on said property? That is a road easement from the original landowners. That's in booking page, and I believe you have copies of all of that because it was in the packet. Has that been satisfied as well? Because I know they sent letters to the participant, the surrounding homes that are actually affected by said road easement. And that needs to be corrected before Mr. Clayton can purchase this piece of property.
I didn't see any record in the county records of an easement, so I'm not sure if that is something that was a private easement between private parties, in which case the city wouldn't have anything or the county wouldn't have any thing to do with it. If it's a public easement, then the county would have record of it on our, you know, on the plat or the survey. So I'm not sure is my answer.
So that would be a no. That hasn't been satisfied.
I'm not able to address it.
Okay, that's fair enough. And then the last thing I have to say. Regarding wetlands, it is required by state law for any person, an annexation, a city, a homeowner that has water on their property to contact the Department of State Lands to get a delineation report. That process takes four months per DSL. I don't see where that has been done in this particular instance in this annexation. I see there's a national wetlands map, which I can pull it up too. I have two copies of it. My problem with that is that to me, that satisfaction has not been met in the criterion per the state law. They also need to contact the US Army Corps of Engineers, and I know that also has not been done. In regards to wetlands and the planning in this city, I talked with Melanie. I have spoken with the entities at the Department of State Lands and the US Army Corps of Engineers, and we are going to set up some training sessions for the city, for the community, for the county. So people understand how it really works when you have water and water going through your property. I grew up on a creek. We don't own, we don't own the land that the creek is on or a certain amount of length. And we can't do anything in that waterway. So I just want the council to try and address that, make sure they're actually doing what they need to do. So thank you.
All right. Make your best.
Peter, can you speak to one if they have something on record that talks about the easement? Maybe it's a legal document that was signed and maybe not filed or something. Would that cause a problem for us in the future? Could if they could bring this forward, could there potentially be a a case for Luba?
Well, it would depend on what easement was granted, but it would be likely a private easement between neighboring property owners. It might be an access easement that allows some people across that property to their property. Without seeing the easement itself, it's hard to say. Wouldn't likely be a problem for the city. It would be private enforcement between the easement holders and the the burden parcel. To the extent they have to go through DSL or wetlands review, that's something that would need to happen prior to prior to them, you know, as part of their application process. The other thing, because it, I think that public wa, I heard public water when I was Damascus City Attorney, I had to look at this issue extensively because of something called House Bill forty twenty-nine. The first few miles of the Clackamas River have had a navigable, uh, navigability study on them. And those are public waterways. The area the area starting around Carver has not. But the general, so the general rule is property owners owned to the to the center unless their deeds are fixed and show otherwise, or unless that navigability study has has been done to to establish that it's a public waterway.
All right, that satisfies your question?
Yeah, my main question was if it was gonna cause any problems later. So I I think by basing your answers and the answer probably no.
Not for the city. It might be a problem for the property owner.
Okay, great. Okay, I'm now going to close the public hearing and open up the city council. And we are now at the point for a vote on annexation of twenty twenty-two dash zero three and annexation tax lot thirty-four E twenty-one zero zero two oh one. So I need a motion on the floor.
I saw move.
Okay, it's been moved. Do I have a second?
Do you need to show the screen, Taylor, to show the options I can?
Okay.
I move to approve with the conditions presented by staff.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, jury's second in it. Oh, you know, let's go roll call vote on this.
Counselor Dunstirn?
Yes.
Counselor Hughes?
Yes.
Counselor Woodkey?
I don't feel the sewer system issue's been met, so I'm gonna say no.
Counselor Ten Bush?
Yes.
Mary Drinkling?
No.
Motion passes for three to two.
How long does it usually take to get a, like, the next that subdivision application? It could be.
There's no there's no way to know when they would come in for a subdivision application. Neighbors that are within a hundred, a hundred feet of the property would receive notice in the mail of the application of the subdivision at least twenty days before the first public hearing. Anyone is always welcome to come into City Hall or call or email me or the other planning staff for an update on applications that have come in. It is public record. Once we have a pre-op meeting, it becomes public record. So by all means, feel free to contact us. Jerry?
So I see that Scott Clayton is still is still here with us. I mean, can, is it okay that if we ask him if there's a plan for a subdivision application within the next year, year and a half? I mean, is that an okay question to ask him? Just so we know if, you know, if we're gonna be able to get our our sludge capacity under control before they start, you know, before they start that process.
Yeah, you could, you could ask him.
Want to throw in there too, during that year and a half that we're meeting our sludge capacity and stuff, I would like to see proposed development code changes as it relates to wetlands specifically.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we sure can, Scott.
I mean, I don't have a a schedule on development on this, but even if I put it as fast as we could do it, the development wouldn't start until twenty twenty-four, and there wouldn't be a house occupied until twenty twenty-five.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Does that satisfy your question, Jerry?
Yeah, definitely. It definitely makes me more comfortable with the with the decision. I mean, I, you know, the none, none of this is comfortable, you know, no decision like this is comfortable, but we have to, you know, we have to do, we have to abide by the laws and we have to do, you know, things by the book and, you know, but that that answer, you know, it does help me at least in, you know, my own, help my own conscience. So so yeah, it it answers my question.
Okay, thank you. All right, that being said, we will move along. We are at state shared revenues. I must read the script here. I will now open the public hearing to discuss proposed uses of state shared revenues funds for the city of Estacada. I will, Budget Officer Wagner will explain to everyone what that entails.
Okay, well, this is another one of those situations where there's rules that must be followed and it's just kind of procedural. And so with that stated, this is the procedure that having, holding this public hearing on the state shared revenues. I'm not sure if there's any specific question anybody would address, but to allow public to speak of it, we follow this and it allows us to receive those state shared revenues, which are for the cigarette tax, marijuana tax, street tax.
Alcohol tax.
Alcohol tax, all of those that are shared. So we just, there's any public comment for that?
Okay, and I don't have anything in front of me for that, so.
Then there is a resolution when we get down to council business that you will approve that will allow us to receive those state shared revenues.
Okay, so we have any comments from council on this? No? All right, I will now close the public hearing and reopen the city council for state shared revenues. So what do you want out of that? Just a motion to accept?
Nothing. We can actually, I think last year you went ahead and did it all at once, but we'll just wait. The resolution is down under council business. So the next thing we would do is move into the next public hearing, which is for the city budget.
Okay, all right.
We'll just hear from the public all at once and
All right.
Stay as late.
I will now open the public hearing to discuss the fiscal year twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three budget for the city of Estacada. So Wagner, yeah.
Yes. All right, this budget that you are being presented with is the approved budget from the count, from the Budget Committee meeting. And the one change that that happened at the Budget Committee meeting is that the ARPA funds that the city was receiving was moved into a reserve fund. Just to make sure that those are accounted for and not, you know, those would be specifically designated in how the council chooses to spend those. So that that change was made at the budget meeting. The budget that you're presenting with is approved by the Budget Committee. And if there's any other discussion or questions or recommendations, we're open for that.
Yeah, great.
Were the the two areas of the the Chamber of Commerce agreement and the rewarded as well as the the Community Center Agreement rewarded.
That was not changed yet. If you'd like to make a motion to change that, this is what we're talking about is on page eighteen in, I don't know if they go by sections, section five. It's at the very end in the miscellaneous expenditures, it's expenditures, where it notes the Chamber of Commerce Agreement and the Community Center Agreement, which is for tourism and for our meal, the Meals on Wheels program. If you want to make a motion to change those titles from the chamber to what, to tourism or whatever, you can make that motion if there's support from the council. We could change those in the budget.
Yes, and the reason why I feel that those should be changed is because one is a direct agreement with the Chamber of Commerce for tourism. That is a service procurement. And as mentioned, it was a two seven eight, I think B and C of the Organized Statutes require us to have a bid process for that because it's a procurement of services versus, you know, having it be a grant. And so I would like to see that changed so that we can put a process behind that. And then as far as the agreement terminology for the grant to the to the community center, because it's a grant rather than just having it be a direct agreement, I think we should put it as a grant so that we can have equal access to it for any nonprofit that may meet the requirements to be set to that. We should identify it as a Meals on Wheels grant, and so that if another nonprofit in the area somehow obtained some sort of recognition from the state for that, they can apply to the grant as well. And that way we're not showing impartiality toward a single group, but we're showing fairness and equal access to those funds as I think any sort of government fund should be released. So.
I don't have any problem from a staff view of that, if you wanted to make that motion and the council wants to approve that, the changes of those titles.
We'll put that into the council as we come back in out of the public hearing, is that right?
Right, during the meeting or during the budget hearing?
I think we could do it now.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, you can go ahead and do it now.
All right, all right. So you're putting the motion forward.
So I guess the motion would read to alter the those two particular
Two titles.
The two titles, one to read tourism, I guess tourism fund, and the second one to read Meals on Wheels grant.
Okay. We have a second?
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
First and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
I think.
I sorry, Jerry. I, yeah, I, I, well, I have a question because I thought that it came up during the budget meeting that that twenty-five thousand dollars to the chamber actually goes toward the chamber president person's wages. Like, I thought this was part of their salary. I was hoping that we could have a more in-depth discussion about that, that I was gonna bring up during our last agenda item that Counselor Litkey added to our agenda today when we're talking about parameters. But I I actually like the verbiage of Chamber of Commerce Agreement because right now there is an agreement that if chamber of commerce agreement because right now there is an agreement that if we need to change what that agreement looks like, we as a council should talk about, but, but it, that's what it is. It's, it's an agreement that we have, but I thought it came up that this money wasn't for tourism, that it was specifically to cover the salary of the president of the chamber of commerce. I guess I'm confused.
Yeah, I think that was brought up in the budget hearing that it was for, uh, salary for the, um, president or not the president, but the tourism person for the chamber. Um, but in prior meetings with the city, it was put to us as it was for tourism and advertising. So I'm, I'm curious myself. I, I don't know where we're at on this one. I think it needs to be brought back for more discussion into the council because I think just making the motion right now isn't gonna solve the problem. I think we really need to look at this a little closer. So is there a way we can pull this aside, put it into a council and come back on it? Um, as we have a little more discussion and approve the rest of the budget? Or is this something we have to prove the whole thing as is?
Is this, is this money from the TDC?
No, it is not.
Okay.
It is, it's just money from the general fund and so it could, it could be titled either way. At this point, we can discuss how that process goes. And I know it was mentioned at the budget committee meeting, but that was maybe the intention was that that would go to, so that they would have staffing. Uh, but the purpose, as I understand it, because they, we don't have a, an agreement with them to provide, help them provide staffing, was that it was for tourism and promotion for the city, which is a common thing that a chamber would do. So I can't necessarily speak to the, that it pays for, you know, for employee hours. I don't have anything to document that other than the comment that was made at the.
Okay, my, my next question to you then would be, even if we approve this right here, as this, can we bring it back and make a decision based upon that portion of it for what it is it was documented? But after we've had the discussion and decide how that lays out, can we change that after the fact, after we've approved?
I think, yeah, yeah, we could do that.
All right, all right, I think that, that will appease the situation at this point. And I don't think we need to argue the point anymore. As long as we can come back, visit this and figure that out.
After we have the discussion.
Question and so. Is it legal for the city to pay a salary of another organization's employees?
Yeah, I mean, traditionally both the county and cities have given money to chambers of commerce in order to provide for visitor information services. Um, when your mayor and I were on the TDC, um, I changed the fiscal agent from, um, most chambers to the cities. But that, that traditionally has been viewed by the state of Oregon as an appropriate use of transient lodging tax and other dollars. Um, because though is normally the chamber that operates the visitor information center.
Go ahead. So the monies would be for the services of a visitor information center, but not particularly for paying a salary as so stated. Cause that's a direct question I'm asking. Is it legal for us to pay the salary of another organization versus purchase a procurement of a service? And how they use that and identify that's their own business? My question is, is it for identifying it's for the salary of another organization, that particular identifying remark? Is that legal or is that a misappropriation of government funds?
Yeah, I mean, that's, so what, the way that these agreements are normally structured is that the city says that they will pay X amount to, whether it's a chamber or another organization, the museum of the, um, the museum that has the, I always get them confused, the one with the hoops. Um, the museum of the Oregon Trail provides that service and, and they're paid by Clackamas County to provide that service and that goes to employee wages. Um, the, the agreement is usually the 501(c) or, cause they're almost invariably 501(c) organizations, receive X amount. In exchange for that, they'll provide X number of hours per week. Now, whether that's used to pay rent on a building or whether that's used to pay for a part-time employee. I think your mayor and I were both on the TDC when this issue came up with Wilsonville and we did a pretty deep dive into it with, with county council. And what it, it turned out is that, 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 that was, um, inappropriate use of funds and, and actually had a, a pretty long history of, of being utilized around the state for that. So it doesn't give me, um, a, a huge amount of pause. Just because there's such a long history of transient lodging taxes being used to fund chamber visitor information services.
But this is coming out of our general fund first. And second of all, procurement of services, fine, I get that. But like I said, paying that wage particularly for that purpose wouldn't fit, but a procurement of services. And it, you know, whether it's how many hours or what, that's what that'd be used for, correct? So that's, that's fine, but wouldn't that, under that exchange, would not make it a procurement of services requiring it to have three informal bids if it's under, between 10 and $25,000, according to two, seven, eight, B and C.
I mean, I, I would really need to see the agreement we have with the chamber. And we might ask them to provide an accounting because I think that would aid you guys in just adding transparency to what doesn't seem like it's particularly transparent. And so what I can say is in the instances where we've looked at in the past, in Wilsonville in particular, um, that contracting with a 501 organization to provide the services was determined to be appropriate. And that staff salary was a component of that because in that instance, they had a woman who was operating, it was called Oregon's Horse Country, which was a marketing program for the, yeah, I mean, all these memories are, are flooding back for both of us. So that she was dedicating a certain number of hours to that and a certain number of hours to chamber business and they had to account for that. And, and they, she spent most of her time on the Oregon Source Country, so it ended up not being a problem at all. So, um, I think we need a little bit more information. I understand your point and why you're concerned though. And I think that we need to be as transparent as possible with any government funds, um, whether they're dedicated tourism dollars or general fund dollars.
Okay, so based upon your recommendation, I, I'd like to have my motion stand for the changing of the words because the, while the agreement is, is not transparent, the rewarding it to tourism as what the purpose of it is would identify what those are open for and then what's behind them, we can do later. Leaving it as agreement, as a chamber commerce agreement may not stand, same with the other one. It, it's too specific and if we had to alter it later, it just, I'd like to leave it more generic.
I, I think that having increased flexibility is really to your benefit as the city. I mean, I have my own personal thoughts about the effectiveness of visitor information centers when we all are walking around with one of these.
Yeah.
And so, you know, that, that's something that we really looked at. Um, and, and, um, you know, that I'm sure the chamber is a partner organization here in the city and, and the, the, the city wants to be supportive, but also wants to know exactly how dollars are being used. Um, and so that's probably an important conversation to have.
Okay. So in this, I think we can continue on with the budget, have the discussion like we just talked about, clarify.
Okay, so does the mo, that if Joel wants that mo, if Council Littkey wants the motion to stand to change that terminology? Do you want to re-vote? Do, do we do a vote to see now that we understand more clearly? Is there a second, there was a second for that? And then can we do a vote so we know if it passes or fails to change the, just the terminology from chamber of commerce agreement to tourism agreement and from community center agreement to meals on wheels agreement?
You can, you can absolutely do that.
Okay, so.
So do you?
A first and we had a second on that very item. I know that's when Katie raised her AM on that.
Should have, yeah, we should have had any discussion on this at that.
So, yeah, so we're, we're going with that same thing. We have a first and second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so we have one opposed, all the rest.
Okay, all right.
What's Jerry?
Jerry was opposed.
I think he wasn't.
I was opposed.
Oh, you're opposed, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And Katie was a, I.
Yeah, Katie wasn't.
Okay, thank you for that. So we'll make that change and then if there was.
I think Katie wasn't opposed. I think she was trying to say that.
No, I was, I, I said it's fine, tourism agreement and wheel, meals on wheels agreement.
Okay, so she's, so.
Okay.
Three, four, one again.
Okay. Um, so we'll make those changes and then, um, once the, was there any public comment? There was no public comment.
There was no public comment.
Okay. All right, um, then when you come back out of the public hearing, um, you can direct staff to prepare the resolution for the next meeting to adopt the budget.
Okay. I will now come out of the budget public hearing script. We will direct staff to continue on with that, with the changes that we just discussed. And in that, we are done with that, am I right? Is there any?
That is, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Um, we are now on, I'm, I'm lost here.
Council business and a question, should we do that consent agenda item that was brought down first?
I think we should probably do that.
Yeah.
Okay, yes, let's do that. So we will.
Uh, Katie, you had something before we move on?
I, I have a favor. Um, I realize I'm not in the room with you guys and I could easily take a break by going off camera, but I was wondering if it was, if it was okay to have a break?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's.
Let's, let's give everybody a few minutes. I, I know everybody's probably, all right. All right, we will now open back up the city council. And we will have the discussion on the cannabis best practices discussion with Peter Watts and the, uh, city attorney, so.
Right, and I brought, um, Matt Molidas, who is a commissioner on the Oregon Liquor Control Commission. They are run by, that city agency is run by seven commissioners. He's one of them and is viewed as the kind of subject matter expert on cannabis. Is what everyone's calling it these days. So, uh, I asked him to, both of us, um, I guess, fair to say, have a lot of regulatory experience in this, um, and kind of ideas of what's maybe working and what isn't working currently and, and hopefully how to avoid those pitfalls to maximize public good and minimize burden. So, um, just thank you, Matt, for being willing to come here tonight and kind of share your expertise.
Yeah, happy to, I think. I don't know if you, uh, I don't have much, I mean, I'm, I'm mostly here if there's questions, uh, I had a chance to chat with some of you. And, uh, yeah, Peter and I have, have talked a lot, but any questions y'all have, I know that, uh, it sounds like you previously had a few areas owned that didn't work out. But, uh, yeah, it's, it's still a evolving thing. So I can imagine that, uh, it's not a decision to take lightly on how to move it. So happy to answer anything I can.
Good, great, thank you.
So what I worked with staff to do is to create, um, criteria so that there can be clear and objective standards. The idea would be that there probably, hopefully multiple inst, um, interested parties who would be willing to put forth a proposal to the city. This is structured, so the code amendments recommended and the, the scoring criteria is structured so that if you get a deal that you really enjoy or that you think would be benefit to the city, that, that you can move forward with that, but this is a conditional use. So if you were to get proposals that you weren't from, weren't comfortable with or where you didn't believe that the benefit outweighed the burden, that you could say no. Um, I think what Matt and I have noticed lately that's concerning is people's ability or willingness to pay the taxes. And so what, um, we have seen is, is a lot of companies just due to competition and them having to compete on price and there being a lot of licensees, um, competing for the same consumers is that they're not able to pay the taxes that they're owed to the state and cities. That, uh, it's happening at kind of a very high level. What, what I didn't understand when we were originally looking at regs on this was that, um, they can't deduct a lot of their ordinary necessary business expenses that, uh, a non-cannabis business could, so they're hamstrung there. Um, Oregon's tax, um, as compared to other states is relatively high. Oregon's price for products because of the number of stores and just ability to grow is relatively low. Um, there's a growing, um, I'm just going to call them a cartel of illegal grows in Southern Oregon that you've probably seen in the news. A lot of that's flowing out of state, but some of that's staying here. Those people aren't paying any taxes on it. So all of the workarounds that I've tried to create for you is, you know, limiting it to that one store. And with the ability to add a second one down the road, if there's sufficient demand um, from a geographic area, I think you guys are in a really good place because it's not allowed in Sandy. Um, I don't think there's another store till you get to Malala. There's a store on the, um, on the fork of, yeah, on the, on the fork of the highways. Um, as I look at you guys, you know, I, I view you in the same way that I do tourism. You have a lot of campgrounds around. You have people that are camping there that come back, whether they're buying alcohol or food or what have you. Um, I think that you would probably get a, a fair number of those, um, because they're probably not going to drive, even want to drive an extra 20 minutes, even if, even if the product's, uh, priced highly. Um, I put out word that, that you guys are looking at that and, and, and looking at potential proposals. So my hope is that, um, I think there's some local businesses that might be interested. We added, uh, score points for, um, kind of community ties so that some of those businesses with, uh, local experience, community experience, um, would get points and be able to compete. Tried to address kind of the audit concerns, um, just because a lot of companies have been audited and then owe the state hundreds of thousands of dollars. And, and really then no ability to pay that. And so one of the things that we've recently been talking about, I'm a part of the reason that I was able to, I think, get Matt out here tonight is because he's trying to get me to join an advisory committee to look at all the regulations around cannabis and to try and fix some of these issues we're having. Um, is potentially an entity that would take these licenses, um, and whether it's putting them in places like here that doesn't have one or, or whether it's moving them around or selling them or, we don't know yet. Um, but we know that we're in a environment where there are a lot of people that owe a lot of money. And, you know, are out of business and have no way of paying it other than perhaps selling their license. So those are kind of the challenges. The example I used to give is one that go to Skeppus where they have frankly too many stores and the place would advertise $2 pre-rolls and I would think the city's only getting six cents. And I drove out last week and that place was advertising dollar pre-rolls, which means that they're losing money because there's just no way with the components that they couldn't be. So, I mean, I, then I'm thinking, okay, the city's getting three cents. And, and that's not the outcome that I want for the city. You know, uh, staff makes money go so far and constantly figuring out ways to get, um, get matches for grants like this. My hope is that if you guys decide to move forward with the program, this would be another source of revenue to get some of those grant dollars, those sort of things. And so, um, we've talked a lot about the components that might be important and, and I've talked with staff a lot and we, we've tried to be as thoughtful as possible. So we have every success, chance of success.
Sure, next question. If you look in the packet on, ooh, page 195, I think it was. Is that right? Sorry, um, in the, that's the, in the discussion section of that staff report is where the, the list of great potential criteria are, if you wanted to track along with that.
Um, Joel, do you have any questions?
Yeah, so I was looking at those and I think a lot of those questions are good, but I had a couple of questions if we would be allowed to ask. One would be, um, if they could provide something for fiscal feasibility. So like, for example, do they have a good, do they have a good monetary backing? So if they found out that their, you know, most businesses lose money in the first couple of years anyways, build out some things, would they still be able to pay the taxes on that? Um, do they have a good, a good, you know, a good reserve? Um, is that a question we can ask as the first thing? Second one is.
Yeah.
Uh, what about violations? Can they lose points on there too for like if they have had complaints against their license or had violations with the OLCC regarding it and things like that, so.
So if, if they have been audited and didn't pass the audit, then I think the idea was that we would delete points. How many points we delete for that? I think that we could search, certainly ratchet that up. Yeah, I, I mean, whether, I think financial feasibility is just critically important. I think what we saw early on is we saw a lot of out of state investment flowing to Oregon. I think a lot of people thought they were really going to get rich on this and what what we've learned is that in order to be successful, the ones that are successful are like fully integrated. Um, and that they have the ability to sell their. And that they have the ability to sell their product to the store at perhaps a higher price because they can deduct that. And they're they're people that understand both cannabis and real estate. And so there are people that understand business and they understand cannabis and they understand real estate and they had strong financial backing. And if they checked all through those boxes, then they're probably successful and they have. And and then the other thing is is limiting the number of licenses. The city of Beaverton limited their number of licenses. Those licenses are worth a lot of money. Those stores are successful. If you compare that to a Portland or an Oregon city, it seems like stores are always going out of business and, you know, they burn through that initial capital investment and then there's just no way they can get it back. So again, the these rules that I came, these concepts that came up with aren't just to make it successful, it's also so that the business can be successful as possible by, you know, giving them all every opportunity to high sell at that higher price point, which funds their business and also generates higher tax for us. It's one of those few rally around the flat. Well, maybe consumers maybe don't like that quite as much, but the consumers having the product close to them, I've, what I've seen is more important than the higher prices. So if you look at like the prices in Ontario, which did a hundred million, it's because people don't want to drive that extra hour past Ontario in order to get to that next city where it's where it's legal and they're willing to pay four X to eight X of what they're willing to pay in, say, a Portland or a scappus. Nobody's selling dollar pre-rolls in Ontario.
Jerry, you had a question?
So I guess my question is, is there, are there any regulations against a a farm, a grower to opening up a store, retail store in their dispensary in their in their community, you know, so if there, if we had a local farm out here that wanted to, that wanted to apply to open a store, are there any regulations against that?
No, in fact, what we found is that for the the people that are most successful are fully fully integrated so that they control farm, they control the production, so turning it into oh, like Tommy user or whatever, what have you, there's a bunch of stuff and then then they also sell.
And they can't, but they can't co-locate most, most farms. That isn't necessarily true. They have to have separate addresses. They can't. Most farms are on farmland, so obviously it's got to be zoned for commercial. Any any retail use has to comport with traditional retail use, but you know, we get that question a lot because in alcohol, you cannot be a producer and a wholesaler and within certain circumstances, but in other states, they did that as well, but we've found that's kind of the only way to make it in this market is to have that direct pipeline to to the end consumer. Otherwise, the margins just aren't there and then running retail is really challenging.
Okay, Katie, you had a question?
You mentioned some of the problems that are happening in Southern Oregon. My understanding and maybe correct me if I'm wrong, many of the counties that are experiencing the problem of cartels running the cannabis industry in the in the black market. Many of those counties don't actually have their own dispensaries or have made it illegal for legal retail. Isn't that the case or hasn't that historically been the case for those counties?
The challenge too is that what we're seeing is like they explain it four ways. There you've got the the regulated system, the medical system, both are legal. And then, you know, sort of the the hemp market and the illicit market. Where we're seeing the issues are are in the hemp market under the gut like cannabis grown under the guise of hemp because that went completely outside the OLCC system and it's 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 really wild. And then you just see people that are like you, like you mentioned, out maybe in counties that are sparsely populated, planting things and it's 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 awful and and you know, subverting water. So the, yeah, it's the communities that are impacted by it to a certain extent, they they don't have retail. But I don't know that that them having retail would necessarily solve what's going on, just because people have have unfortunately chosen Oregon to to set up shop because whether it's measure one ten where things have been decriminalized or whether it is you know, just a a more permissive environment where cannabis is being grown and hemp and cannabis are virtually indistinguishable. They they can get away with it, they feel, but you know, not anymore. I mean, there's been a lot of efforts the last last year, last couple sessions and and they've got a pretty strong task force working on it. But yeah, it has been an issue.
This state's devoting tens of millions of dollars to enforce on these illegal grows. I will say though that you can, if you, you can tell an illegal grow by the fencing. And there are a number of hoop houses that are just outside of the city that appear to be illegal grows because the fencing isn't the fencing that's necessary in order to legally grow and the and the sort of cameras and other things that you would, that you legally be required to have. I mean, it's just like if you understand the regulations, you just know it when you see it and there's some, there's some stuff happening in Clackamas County that needs to be regulated. Because again, it if if it's not happening legally, then the odds of people paying the taxes are just almost zero. And so it's like enforcement is how you can help the people that are trying to do it right, like the farmers that are getting all the permits and that are paying their taxes. And I mean, one of the best things that governments can do for them is to eliminate their illegal competitors. Because it's not fair for one group to put that in the role.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, I appreciate you saying, you know, taking out the illegal competitors because I guess from a community development standpoint, I see the benefit in having prices that are everyday consumers, not just the tourists that pass through our city are are willing to pay for, you know, an ounce of cannabis, but I'm I'm talking about the people who are already in our city, people like cancer patients, veterans suffering from PTSD, you know, anybody who uses cannabis, whether they've got a medical card or they don't. You know, that's the thing is if we only have one store that can charge whatever they want to charge, yeah, they're going to line their own coffers and they're going to line the coffers at the city. But I'm looking at the consumer standpoint, thinking that we're not actually going to see a major benefit from a community development standpoint of of getting those illegal competitors out of our city because the people that live here are still going to choose to go to their, the person that they're getting it from now because of price. Well, I mean, I can go and I can buy it from the store legally for $10 or I can get it from the guy that I've been getting it from for the last five years for $5. You know, a consumer here in Estacada is always going to try to think with their wallet. So we're not actually going to see any sort of benefit to a reduction in the illegal trade of things in that industry in our city if we've only got one store that can charge whatever they want to charge. I guess I I I could almost guess what your answer is going to be, but Matt, I guess I really would like to hear what your position would be when talking about one store versus expanding it to two. I see a lot of benefits personally as a consumer and as as someone who believes truly in the free market system. I I would like to hear what your perspective on it is of having two in Estacada.
Well, and I'm I'm a big believer in the free market system too, and that's, you know, and and I I a couple of years ago, I would have been right there with you that that, you know, everybody should be allowed to come into this thing. What we've seen is, you know, it's it's highly regulated. There's there's so many issues on the federal level still where they can't deduct. You know, they can't take the proper deduction and the system that used to be equated a lot cannabis to liquor licenses. The OLCC doesn't cap liquor license anywhere you can get it, you can, you know, you can get a liquor license. What they probably are, what's becoming more and more evident is the folks that got in initially got mistaken their their claim. And we sort of figured out where the kind of balance point is where you where, you know, everybody's making enough at the retail level just to survive because they let so many people in. So, you know, I guess the the roundabout way of answering your question is instead of looking at it like like open market, we almost look at it more like liquor stores now. And that's that's what I probably honestly advise at this point is that it's been such a challenging business. It's been so difficult that while in my heart, I'm a free market person, I just there's too many variables right now to to advise anybody to rush into the slaughter and and that's my honest, you know, opinion of it at this point. So I would say having one in your your communities is probably wise. If you wanted to have two, it could, they could certainly find a balance, I think, because because you're not wrong about what you what you mentioned about, you know, wanting to keep it you know, for for the people that actually need it. I think, you know, there are, they could apply for the medical card, get the tax reduced and they could still facilitate that through a retailer. There are some folks that do donated product that, you know, it's few and far between, but I I think that if people need that reduced cost product, they might, I mean, they could, maybe, maybe that's not the answer to drive to Portland or something like that, but yeah, I just, it's it's tough. So I I frankly advise, you know, almost a liquor store model versus the restaurant model. Maybe one for a community, per population, at least for now. Because this thing, I mean, as much as we want it to be the free market, unfortunately, it's there's a lot of other headwinds coming from other directions that make it not exactly free market.
The the other thing too is that, you know, who who is buying it in stores, it's people that don't have access to a drug dealer. So like seniors, frankly, I mean, King City stores do very well because you know, they do. And people that want like edibles or that want like liquid or want something beyond what what marijuana products were available prior to it becoming legalized. And I mean, the the trend that we're seeing is that really ninety percent of the market is either like edibles or pre-rolls and the number of people that like have a bong or are rolling their own or all those things. It's just it's very at least generational. With with younger people gravitating towards those pre-roll and edible products. And, you know, I think that everybody thought that there'd be like aficionados and that would be a large portion of the market and what it turns out that a lot of people just want to get high. So like they're going to, they're gonna, you know, they're not going to, they're not necessarily like going for like the freshest strain of what have you. I mean, that's like a relatively small amount of the market compared to like somebody that's buying it like cheap. And some of those people have drug dealers, but a lot of those people don't. And then I don't know, a lot, as as the edible portion of the market kind of continues to increase, I just think that the number of people buying illegally will continue to decrease.
That'd be the hope. I think Oregon will always have because you could have four, four plants grown legally and then you.
And that's like a pound of plant. I mean, we're, that is, that is more than you could, that's more than any anyone could really smoke.
Yeah, so I think they'll they'll always be a gray market or a traded market or whatever it is, but 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 most people, when they want quality product that's tested, goes through a regulated system, they're going to go to a retail store because there's God knows what's in in some of the stuff that these folks could be buying and it's it's, you know, at least the product that ends up in an OLCC licensed store has been, you know, tested and to the highest standards and it's gone through the system, tracked, traced and yeah, so they've got a little bit more assurances there.
All right. Thank you. Any more questions on the panel? We thank you for the presentation. You did a great job for putting us out there. You two are a team. Katie, you have something?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't realize we were ending discussion that quickly. So the next meeting, are we expecting to see an updated ordinance as it relates to our retail cannabis in our development code?
Why, I wrote one, so if you guys want to continue moving forward this process, we can certainly bring it and it it allows it as a conditional use in the downtown zone with setbacks from your two main identified streets that will leave.
Yes. And Peter, I don't know if it was relayed to you, we actually have a chapter in our municipal code as it relates to cannabis. And that's where the the buffer zones are that are mentioned, you know, the within a thousand feet of a school, park, church, park or whatever. And so there were, there were no recommended changes to that amendment or to that chapter that we have seen proposed. Did you have you edited that or made any proposed changes since we last met on, I guess that was May twenty-third?
You know, let me take a, when I get back to the office, I'll take a look at what I sent over to to staff, which was to to make it conditionally allowed and certain codes and to restrict the rest. I'll take a look at that chapter. I think we made some revisions to that, but I'll make sure that they're in line with exactly what you guys said.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And then will this, will this the application criteria, will that be documented in the code or is that in a separate?
I I think it will be in a business license. I think that hopefully we have a number of people apply for business licenses and they could have that criteria and you know that it could be allowed as a conditional use if you guys determine that it's what you want.
Okay, Katie, you have another question then?
Not a question for staff or attorneys, but mostly for you guys, for the counselors. So I I get this sense that this isn't necessarily an industry that you guys have any like, and I don't mean to be insulting about this, that level of expertise. That being said, I think that it would behoove us to make some sort of an ad hoc committee, not a committee that's supposed to meet, you know, once a month, every day or every month for the next however many years. But just an ad hoc committee that we put together, a group of people that we appoint based on maybe some level of expertise and maybe even purposefully put on some voices of opposition to help round out what an application could potentially look like. And then maybe even as part of their their last meeting ever, they could help us actually screen some of the applications before they're presented to the council. Obviously, all the applications would be screened to the council and we're going to weigh them and judge them on our own. But maybe it would be nice to have an added filter of another group of people who, again, have some level of expertise in this field that that the five of us here don't have.
Well, you know, I I'm with you there, Katie, but I was once young. And I actually have smoked pot when I was younger. I'll admit to that. So when you talk about a professiono for pot and a committee, we can call it a pot commission, I find that a little out there. Yeah, I really do. You know, of all the things we could be doing at this point, starting a pot commission is not my idea of one that I'm going to throw out there. So council, you have any words on this?
I I think we have a panel of experts. We have an OLCC member here. We have an attorney that's well versed in all of that. We've been go over this for the last year or so, talking about it. We've got, we've got input from the community. We've got, we've had people present that are in the industry. I think we've got as much information at us as we can to make a decision. We're not writing the code. We have experts writing the code. We're just saying yes to it at this point. And then they're advising us on what can can and can't go or shouldn't shouldn't go into that that application process. And I think we, I think we all have enough sense, life experience and everything else to make a good decision, especially with the advisement of the experts here to choose that person. So I don't think an ad hoc committee, I think that would further delay the process, cause more confusion and this basically caused a lot more problems than that would solve. I think we're basically right at the end of this thing. Let's not beat a dead horse. Let's get the 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 ordinance written, put into place, and then let's start getting some applications so we can move forward.
Jerry?
First things first, making light of a suggestion from a counselor, I I I find that offensive. You know.
I'm sorry, offended you, Jerry?
Making light of an of of a suggestion from a counselor, I find that offensive. It's a, that was ridiculous. I do agree with Joel on some of his points. I think that, you know, putting together committee and going through going through that would would extend the process and I think that we've, you know, Process and I think that we've, you know, we've, we've got enough information to move forward, but um I just uh. I I just wanted to put it out there that I I did find that offensive, Shauna, I and uh. Uh you know, you shouldn't be apologizing to me, I think you should be be apologizing to Katie, um our counselor Dunsmere. But um I do agree that, you know, putting the committee together would probably extend the process and and we do have a lot of information already. And we do have a good group of experts and we have heard a lot of information to move forward, so.
Note taken, Jerry, do you have anything?
Nope, I think we should just go ahead and proceed, I don't see any reason to form another committee just to, you know, it's just gonna. Slow down the process, so. Just go forward.
I do, I do appreciate the um. Desire to have as much public involvement as possible and I think that you guys have done a good job of over a long period of time. We haven't rushed through it, reaching out to the public, um one concern would be that some of the experts. That we might want to incorporate in that would be the ones who want to apply also and they're, they have probably some really good. Input to give to us, um but yet they also would want to apply for that, you know, to get that license, that business license and so. Um I think that working together, the council can. Put that, I think we put that together, moving forward, so we'll work on that and bring it back.
Yeah, great, thank you all for your wonderful time and and giving us all the perspective here.
Yes.
From your point of view. Yeah. All right, thank you. All right, so we're at the resolution, um do you want to put that forward, is that what we're doing now or you got something else you want?
Um well, we'll wanna, we have a couple more things that have been added on there, but let's do that resolution, resolution twenty.
Okay, let's do resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero zero eight, a resolution relating to municipal services, state shared revenues. So do I have a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
First and second, all those in favor say aye? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes, thank you.
Okay.
All right, what do you got?
Next, let's do the um item that was moved from the consent agenda, the resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero one zero. Um declaring sole source provider. For the screw press equipment and if you have questions that you want to ask about that process, um. There is a letter in the packet from the city engineer explaining why. Um typically, you know, we go out to bid for any kind of project or equipment, um that would be this ex, this costly. Um and city engineer put a letter in the packet about that, but um we don't take it lightly, um you know, to declare a sole source. And so uh Chris is here, he's our plant operations director and can answer um. Questions about why this particular company and their process was chosen, um so I'll just let you guys kind of. Yeah, you know, ask any questions you want and it's ultimately, our engineer said, it's up to you. We could go either way, our recommendation is to go this way, but um whatever you are most comfortable with.
Okay. Uh Joel, go first.
All right, so um the reason why I asked to move it off here uh was because. Um while I respect the expertise of of Chris and their engineer. Um I also think it's our responsibility as a city council to be fiscally responsible. And that means to make it a competitive market for that and a, excuse me, a quick re uh search of the. Of a screw press resulted in like fifteen different um companies that make them, not all might get services particular area. But a large portion of them said according to their websites and stuff, they do service this area. Um I think it was like eight I got to before I stopped, um so there there are, there are others that do services area and I I get. We want the best, especially we can move it over and I I'm not gonna argue that piece at all, I completely understand. But I think on the other side is for six hundred thousand dollar project, I think is what I was estimated there. We owe it to the people of Estacada to be fiscally responsible and force. A company to be competitive to bid that project and had to at least look at the other ones that are put in for the bid. We can choose to go with a specific or a particular one if it's if it still meets the criteria, but I think. By not doing that, we're going to be basically limiting ourselves in that. Fiscal responsibility to to do so and um. The I get we could move it to the new location, we want the best stuff out there, but I still think we we should really should keep that to. To a uh an open bid process, so.
Okay, I don't see any hands raised, but I'd like to hear from you, uh why this is the the process you think we should go with?
Well, we did some looking around. And this company is somewhat local, they're northern Washington. And they can send a guy down here in just a couple hours if we need support or maintenance or whatever, all the other guys that. I've researched aren't close and they're a lot harder to get bids from, you gotta send samples in. None of them are all this are the same, so every piece of equipment is different. And this, this manufacturer has been in the business for fifty plus years, they started out in the pulp and paper in- industry. They've been in the wastewater industry for the last twenty years. And I just think they're proven, it's a proven piece of equipment, I've heard horror stories of cities, small cities like us buying something cheap. And it ends up not working out in the long run, there's issues with it and I haven't heard any, anything like that with FKC. And the people I've talked to that run in the field, they love them, there's no issues. So that's just, and time wise, I'd like to get this thing up and going as soon as possible because we're. Overloaded with solids and I think this will really help us with our solids capacity issues.
Yeah. So your recommendation is that this is something we could use, it would be proven. I mean, you've seen it other places, I mean, you went through it with them and they've said that this is, this is the product, this is what we need, it's gonna work well. They're gonna give us the support we need, that's what I'm getting from this.
Yes.
Okay, um council, anybody have any questions for him about this process? No? No?
Just trying to process what he said here for a minute, um. Yeah, and I. And so it I I get the, I get the argument of having him here close, but those are all good points and like I said, I I'm not gonna argue your expertise on the particular piece there. And I think our main responsibility is the fiscal piece. And so I I completely understand that and they probably are the best in the industry, no, no argument there. But it's like, you know, when you go to a car dealer, as to say, you're gonna go to a car lot and you're gonna look for, and I hate to compare. That's something like this to a car, but I I think the process is still, the understanding is still the same. You're gonna see a a a truck, a Ford truck, you want an F three fifty Ford truck and that's priced at seventy thousand dollars. Um at one location and you have another location, you might be able to get a something similar, a. Uh Ford F three fifty with different features or whatever else. Another location and it's maybe two thousand dollars less, you might be able to get the other one to drop their price be- because of com- competitive bidding against it. The same idea as I'm trying to stand here is, while F. FKC may be the best one to go with, by but then knowing that other bids to the process may get them to. Bid a little more competitive and save the city, the people in the city ten percent or five percent or something on that bill. And allow us more room for negotiation with them if need be on services and features going forward, knowing that we have. You know, some sort of, there's other things that we're considering. And that's why by putting us to a single source reduces all of that leverage that we have to argue that piece there. And by just inviting other bids in, we may only get the local one because everybody else may know that they're more expensive. But still knowing that it's open for bid makes somebody to be more con- consider that and be more competitive in their bid pricing. And that's all I'm looking for is by not not basically not cutting us off at the knees. But just, you know, giving us the ability to have a little bit of negotiation room, because I think we kill that if they know where's their single source. So.
Another thing with the three bids, in my experience is you go out and get three bids, you know what one you want. You get a lower bid, well, you have to go with that lower bid, do you?
Uh Peter, can you help here, I think you with the free bid process, you have the option to go. With the middle ground or you have the option to to go with the if the council so approves it, correct?
I I mean, it would depend how we structured the bid, so we could. Uh add in factors like i- industry experience such as, you know. Local proximity, I mean, there there are ways that it could be structured to give you guys flexibility. Um what I'm noticing in most of my cities is oftentimes they're lucky to get one bid. And in ink, the part of the problem is that everybody got ARPA money at the same time. And it can be used for water and it can be used for sewer and it can be used for a couple other things unless you have a qualified census tract. And so it's just been really hard getting bids, I I don't know if that city staff's experienced with this, that they've reached out to people and. Simply haven't gotten interest, I mean, that's just been my experience lately, same thing with. Police cars, we've just been having really a heck of a time. Getting any police cars, um because all these cities are competing against each other, they all have federal money.
But this is a sealed bid process at this point, so they won't even know how many bids we've received until the bid process is closed, correct?
Well, if it's sealed bid process, that that would imply that we're going with the low bid, um so if we were to do a. RFP for the services, uh request for proposals. Um that's the sort of process where we can build in some of those other criteria, um. So we'd have more flexibility in choosing, um uh sealed bid, you're pretty much what's in the envelopes.
Okay, so the RF, the RFP is what we don't look at there, it wouldn't, we'd still have the flexibility with it. But they still wouldn't know how many people have bid, correct, because it can't be, that can't be uh discussed until or what what's our?
Well, so we what generally there's a pre. And I don't know exactly how, but there's a pre-meeting where people that are interested in bidding show up. Um so if that happens and there's only one person in the room, that doesn't mean that there wouldn't be a second bid, but it means. Pretty improbable that there's a second bid. If there's three people that show up and they kind of look at the project and and what funds might be available, we might get. One bid, we might get three, maybe we might get zero, it's hard to know. Um and I don't know if the that our particular plan is, is such that we're really limited into. I mean, you've had a lot of things on your agenda that I'm kind of consider myself to be an expert in, but I have to say that. This is, this screw press thing is not, not one of them.
Expert, but I have a couple other things to add because I may have made a mistake because along with that letter that Kurt sent. He also sent a proposal from FKC, um which I was probably supposed to put into the. Packet, but I didn't, first, I only got, I only put the letter in, I think, for some reason, um so we do have a proposal. That is from um FKC, so they've kind of already laid out what their financial position is on that. Um. And their their total, the price summary total is three hundred eighty-nine thousand one hundred eleven dollars. Not including taxes or bonding and then they have um like. Installation, they have, they have a lot of information in here, so they've already kind of laid out a proposal to us. And I think your example of the cars is great because when you go looking for cars. I think sometimes unless you're buying brand new and they're they're apples for apples and you can just go to different dealers and see who's got the best deal. Um a lot of times you're comparing, hey, this, this has this, but it costs this much and this has this and like, go over here and get this, but. They're all kind of variations on a theme and I think that what Kurt and Chris have worked out um through their. The investigation that they've done and talking to the people that are using the equipment and looking at all the options, I think they've narrowed it down to this would be the best one. We still can go out for bid, but I also kind of like to do RFP or to go for bid, I hate to um. Already know what we want and try to angle our bid, our bid process or a proposal to get. To make them successful because we know what we want, if we already know what we want, um we should go through the process to say, hey, this is what we're gonna buy. And that's the most transparent to everybody um versus. Trying to finagle it so that it ends up so we get the one we want or we end up without the one we want and then may. It may not be the best thing, so it is up to you, we can go either way. Um our recommendation is to go with it through, because there there's a state process for procurement and there's that. State process that we're following here for the sole source designation, um. So I'll let you guys discuss that, but that's our recommendation.
Yeah, and I I'd like to speak on this a little bit, I mean, we hired. Uh you to make the decision for us for our plant, that's what your job is every day, you see it, you know it. I trust that you know it well, um if you say. This is what we should do because this works for you, it makes it easier for you guys to do your job. I think that's the most important factor here, I don't think we should be looking at nickels and dimes. When we're talking about the efficiency of our program and the people we've put in place to make sure that happens. So my recommendation would be that we go with their recommendation of where we get the screw press. And write that one out because I think in the end here, we have to trust that they know what they're doing. And that's what I'm really focused on here, because my concern is not just for the, you know, nickels and dimes here, but for the efficiency of our system and. Will it hold up and will we get the maximum capacity that we need, that's the issue, so. I'm I'm in favor of um going with this and and sticking with that, so anybody else have any comment, Jerry?
So I I I really appreciate that statement, um you know, I I've been saying it for a long time, we put people in place. You know, or we, we put people in place to make this, to to make these calls, we we need to trust the people that we put in place to make these calls. And uh I stand behind, you know, Chris's decision, Chris, you know, Chris and Melanie, um I stand, we. We put Melanie in place to to do the job that she does and uh, you know, Denise, between Denise and Melanie, they put Chris in the place to put. To do the job that he does and uh they know way more about it than I do and I I really do stand behind their decision. Cause uh you know, you go out, going back to the car analogy, you know, you go out looking for a car, you you're, you got your heart set on a to- on a Toyota. And you end up with a Kia, you're gonna be disappointed every time, so um I really do. Trust Chris's opinion and uh you know, his knowledge on this and I think we should uh definitely go with. You know, what's gonna, what's gonna be best for the city in the long run.
Katie?
I've heard a lot of comments from citizens as well as people on this board just tonight alone, talking about the fear of. Um capacity issues at our wastewater treatment plant. And we just had the manager of our wastewater treatment plant tell us, I found something that will help the problem, so I say we give him the solution to the problem.
Thank you, uh Joel?
Uh yeah, um uh I actually, after hearing things and I never questioned the, I said that in the beginning, I I completely agree with your. Your assessment on it, I just felt like we needed to at least put that out there and ask a question, have the discussion about. Fiscal responsibility and I think we've had that and um I I'm trying to sway my opinion to think that. Uh there's enough here to convince me that we can go that route, so. I'll withdraw any objection to it.
All right, in that, do you need a vote for this or how would you like to do?
We need a motion to approve that resolution then and I thank you for, thanks for pulling it out and I know we made um Chris wait till the very end, but. Um and you guys have been here way too long, but um it's, I think it's good to discuss these, this type of, when it's not our ordinary. Process to really discuss it, make sure it's the right thing, go over what the engineer recommends, what the plant director recommends. Um and and just, just for, you know, the community to understand, for the council to understand that. We're doing our due diligence and making sure that it's the best thing, so yeah, we just need, we would need a motion to approve that resolution that's up there under the consent agenda.
Okay.
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero one zero, a resolution of the Estacada City Council. Declaring a sole source provider for screw press equipment.
Second.
First and second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, thank you, we appreciate your service and you do a great job, so keep doing it. All right, um what else do I have on there?
The last thing would be that what was added to the agenda would be the Chamber of Commerce discussion how to um how to best. Determine what the procedure is um to develop or develop a process to provide funds for nonprofits or to provide. Um that tourism funding, so do you want to make a? Discussion?
I think we had a lot of the discussion earlier, so I think the big thing is is to um determine. Your, what you you're working with, Peter, and how this this staff come back with. What kind of programs and how we approach that, keeping ourselves transparent and legal. Um. On that, on that area and also, yeah, the um have equal access for. Uh to be able to either bid on the process or to, if it's, if it's a procurement or service or if it's a grant, have it open, so any nonprofit. Uh, to be able to either bid on the process or to, if it's, if it's a procurement or service, or if it's a grant, have it open, so any nonprofit that might fit those. Criteria can can apply for that grant. I think that's kind of what I got from earlier, talking to when Peter was talking about a little bit earlier. And what it was, would you agree with that, Peter, was kind of what we were?
Yeah, I mean, that, that, that sounds like a really prudent plan and approach to me. We, we want to be as transparent as possible, and we want to know exactly how. How the funds are being spent, and that, that should be. Easily accessible information, I would hope.
Okay, so I'm not sure how that motion's gonna read.
Or just, just consensus in general, if everybody's, Katie has a, uh, we got a couple of questions.
Jerry, okay, Katie. Jerry, Jerry. Katie sent for you, Jerry.
Okay, so I, I, first of all, I just want to explain my no vote. I just want to explain the reason I voted no. Because up to this point, up, up to this point of tonight, um, the. Agreements that we've had between these two have been agreements. We haven't gone into discussions with them about changing anything, so. My no vote on changing the verbiage was because up to this point, it's been an agreement. Um, and we haven't, we haven't discussed with them any kind of changes, so we go and change our budget to read something different. You know, I, I, that's not tran- that's not transparent, that's just covering, you know. Changing, changing verbiage for, you know, to, and it doesn't really change anything, just changing the verbiage doesn't change anything. So that's why my, that's why I voted no is because, um, I don't feel like changing words just to change words really means anything. Cause up to this point, it's still in agreement with those two organizations. We still have an agreement with the. Chamber of Commerce, Commerce, until we start that discussion with them and change that. Agreement to whatever we're gonna change it to, it's still in agreement. And then also with, uh, the Community Center, um, for Meals on Wheels, it's still an agreement. That we've made previously, um, and just changing those words doesn't really, uh, that's just changing something to change something. It, we're, it doesn't really make a difference, so that's, that's why I voted no on that. Because I don't really think that we accomplished anything, we didn't, we, we didn't make ourselves any more transparent. You know, none of that, it, it was just changing the verbiage to change the verbiage. You know, I don't know if it was a feel-good thing or what, but, you know, until we actually start those discussions, go into those discussions with those two organizations. We, we really didn't change anything. We're still gonna give them the twenty five thousand dollars, we're still gonna give them the ten thousand dollars. We really didn't change anything because we've had that previous agreement. Um, so I really think we need to go in, we need to move forward and, and, you know, and go in and have the discussions with those two organizations. And, you know, figure out how we're gonna do this moving forward to make it, you know, the best for the community, so. Um, like I said, that's, that's all I really have to say. I just wanted to explain my no vote and, uh, you know, I wasn't. Trying to make waves or anything, I was just, that, that's, that was my thinking, and I just wanted to put that out there.
Joel?
Um, yeah, and I, I understand your, um. Your position on there, Councilor Ten Bush. The, I think that just sets us the ground, so it's not locked in on a verbiage area, but it allows us to start, it's a first step in that conversation. And the, the budget was approved for the tourism agreement, but that tourism agreement now can be turned into. A def- the defined version of that can be a program that requires a process behind it versus a. There's an agreement directly with the, uh, the, the Chamber of Commerce. It can be, the verbiage behind it can be changed, and the meaning behind it can be changed now that it's set that way, but the second part is, we, we may have approved the funds. But we're having the conversation now, so we're not locked in to write them a check for anything. Uh, until we have the conversation, because, just because we had a previous agreement, doesn't mean that the agreement's being renewed technically, has to be renewed. Or reviewed going forward each year. It's not a guaranteed thing every year until it's been done, so this is where we're having the conversation. Before our checks written, and we can put the process behind there, and that's what that conversation was earlier. So, like I said, this is the first steps in that to put that together, so this is making it more transparent, now also one tiny step in the right direction.
Katie?
Uh, I just voted yes, because. I pick my battles and it doesn't really matter ultimately in the grand scheme of things, it's, it's childish and it's whatever. If you guys want to change the words, change the words. I would say that when we have this next conversation, I would like to see a copy of any written agreement that we have with the Chamber of Commerce. That's gonna answer so many questions that we all seem to have before we even continue this conversation. I would like to see any copy of written agreements that we have with the Chamber of Commerce. And then ultimately, I'd like to move forward by knowing what similar agreements look like between other city governments. And their local Chamber of Commerce is in other cities similar to our size. Or maybe even cities who grew as quickly as we grew or something like that, but, you know, let's do some more research. There's always been a special relationship between the city and this Chamber of Commerce. They use the city's logo, I mean, we're, we have a very close and special relationship with the Chamber of Commerce. If we need to redefine what that looks like, then we need to redefine what that looks like. Changing verbiage in a budget isn't gonna do that. But if we want as a city to have a greater discussion about what the future of our relationship looks like moving forward with our Chamber of Commerce. Then we need to probably have a joint session where we meet with everybody on their board and our board. And we talk about how special a relationship we've had and what that's gonna look like moving forward. Um, but I think that that conversation really needs to start with a certain level of education as well. And knowing exactly what our agreement has been, uh, is going to help answer a lot of those questions.
Okay, great. So I, I think we've got a sense. I don't think we need to go back and forth anymore. Um, I think we've got a sense of where we need to go with this, so bringing it back for discussion. Um, would be the way to go.
Great.
So, we appreciate that, and all we need is a consensus on that, I don't think we have to go.
And I think that it sounds like there's pretty good consensus if you want to delve into this now.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, all right, thank you.
All right, thank you, and then I'm at the next citizen and community group comment. So I have, uh, Brandy Licky.
Can you hear me? Just have to tip it more towards you. No, okay, there we go. Um, I'll try to be really quick. I have a few things. I was gonna read it, but my phone died. I got an email from a community member, they were gonna try to be here, they couldn't be here, they've been trying to, I guess they've emailed the council a couple of times. About this issue, um, and it was, um, trying to get a mirror on Fourth and Schafford where that city bench is. Um, because people are having trouble seeing around that corner, so I don't know if there's a way that, um, I told them to email you guys again, but. I don't know if there's a way that you can talk to them about that, they just asked me to bring it up. Um, another thing was, uh, as a. Part of an organization in the city, I really appreciate the time you guys take to. Make sure the community knows what's going on. I know it's been a long night, but we really appreciate it. Um, and I think it's important for other nonprofits to know why there's a certain special relationships. So for me, I really appreciate that. Um, and thirdly, we have a big event coming up, um, July second. We have a first responders appreciation dinner up at Hillelburn Farm. At the pavilion that they have, it's gonna be really awesome. And then July third, we have a huge vendor carnival event, um, with tons of vendors and it's gonna be awesome. And we hope to see everyone there. We'd love to see some of the city staff and council there, and, um, that's it. Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you. All right, I don't have any more forms in front of me. So that being said, we have the mayor council report, so I will start off with you, Jerry.
Oh, my goodness, what a night, um, thank you guys for sitting with us through this, uh, you know, three and a half hours, three. Three and a half plus hours, um, those of you that have been here and those of you that joined a little later, I still appreciate all of it. Um, council, thank you guys for, you know, the work you put in, I really appreciate it. Um, so I was asked a question from someone that is considering running for council this term, running against me. But, uh, I was asked a question of, you know, uh, what, what, what kind of time do you put in? And while I can't speak to anybody else, um, you know, I, I can speak, I think I can speak to Sean, but I really can't speak to anybody else. The amount of time that you put in, um, on a volunteer basis is the, is the type, is the kind of counselor that you want to be. So, you know, um, I know for myself, you know, I spend, I spend hours. Going through the packet, I spend, you know, not just hours going through the packet, I try to research everything. Before asking the question of city staff, I tried to go through and research, um, whatever I can figure out on my own. Before, cause I want to form my opinion, I want to form my opinion based on my research. I don't want to ask questions, I mean, I'm not saying that staff's gonna be biased, but before I ask the question of, of somebody else, but before I ask the. Um, clarification from somebody else, I know that I'm going to get some sort of bias. So I try to get as much information myself as I can, and typically, by doing my own research and in reading the packet, I can. Um, I can come up with a, with a logical, educated, um, decision and, uh. Not really have to, you know, take anybody else's in, uh, opinion into consideration, so, um. Like I said, I know for myself, and I'm pretty sure I can speak to Sean, the amount of hours. That we put in, um, is, is, is pretty great, and, uh, you know, and I, I told this person. Who's considered running, I mean, it, the amount of hours you put in just depends on what kind of counselor you want to be. You know, that, it, it just depends on how, how, how committed you are to your community, and, uh, I appreciate the work. That, uh, this council puts in, um, I appreciate the questions that are asked, um, and I really appreciate the conversations that are had. Um, I just. Um, like I said, I just appreciate you all, and I appreciate everybody that shows up for these meetings, because they're here for the information. Just, you know, they're here for the information that we can provide, they're here for our decisions and, you know, to know which direction this community is gonna go in and. Um, and then last but not least. As I always do every, every single meeting, I really appreciate staff and the, the, just the, the, the amount of work that they put in and. And everything that they do for us, we, we would not be, we could not do our jobs without them, so, um, thank you all, and I appreciate you.
Thank you, Jerry, that was well said. Uh, Katie?
Gonna be hard to top that, I just want to say, have a good evening to everybody, and yes, we spend. Countless hours as counselors, I. If I sat down and actually counted how many volunteer hours I've put in over the last four years, I. I, I, I wouldn't even be able to fathom it. Uh, just the last week of May was a really good example. We had city council Monday, budget meeting Tuesday. I had, uh, the commission that I was the liaison for on Wednesday. I didn't have any time to myself until Thursday that week. Uh, even tonight, I, I went to work this morning, I, I left my house at eight o'clock to go to my nine AM shift in Sandy. And I haven't basically clocked out since, because I got off at six, I had to zoom home, I had to be here for six thirty, and it is now after ten o'clock. I had to miss putting my kids to bed, I had to miss dinner, um, I actually, uh, turned off my camera one night, or one time tonight. So that I could eat a piece of pizza really quick, because I haven't eaten since lunch, and I'm sorry, but I haven't eaten, so, um, yeah, that is. The, the time commitment, really, if you want to do this right, it could be a really big commitment. And I wish that I had known that going in, I, and. And honestly, the other thing that I wish I had known going in is that as a counselor, I can't stop development. That really killed me, because when I ran in two thousand and nineteen, I wanted to stop all of the single family homes that were just being built. Faster than you could sneeze, it was, it, it would, and it was devastating for me to watch all of my family's farmland. Be surrounded by subdivisions. And I got onto the council hoping that I could help slow it down, and when I. Went through my very first land use training in two thousand nineteen after being hired and learning that, no, actually, the law says that you can't. It was a real wake-up call. You really learn how powerless you actually are sitting in the seat, and it really sucks to be that powerless. And when you spend so much of your time, and then. The, the other thing that you have to keep in mind is you're not gonna please everybody. And you are going to make somebody somewhere very upset. Whether or not you get enough of them upset at you to have a recall campaign is, I guess, a question, but. Again, life lessons learned, huh? So. I just want to say to anyone thinking about running for council, really weigh the decision. Heavily, and don't, don't make it light, because you dislike somebody who's sitting in the seat. Because people who are sitting in the seat love the city just as much as you do, they're working just as hard as you are, and. There, we're just trying our best, so that's all anyone can do, and I hope that everybody just. Does their best. Thank you, staff, for always doing your best and giving us a really great evening. I'm going to go to bed very soon. Have a good, have a good night, you guys.
Thank you. Charity?
Um, thank you, so with the topic of time and with all the, all the good words that have been said, I am just going to thank everybody for being here this evening. Thanks, staff, thank my fellow counselors and mayor, and I will leave it at that.
Hey, Joel? Ditto. And that was, that was long.
You beat me.
You know, I, I, I wish I could just say goodbye tonight, and that would be the end of it, I'm sure a lot of you would wish the same thing. But, um. When I heard tonight that we as counselors don't have a choice. Or we as mayors don't have a choice, I didn't get into this, because I don't have a choice, I have a choice. That choice is you, the people. We, the people, I, that meant something to me when I ran first for a council years ago. It still means something to me this day. I will not stop being this mayor that fights for you, so if you think that's how it's gonna go, I'm just gonna lay down and. Let everything just happen in the city and say, oh, well, I can't do anything about it, you're wrong. I can do something about it. I can bite to the bitter end, and you know what? I don't get a paycheck, but I didn't want one. I did this because I grew up in a small town that disappeared, saying that I can't do anything offends me. Because I know I can do something. I know I have a voice, and that voice will be heard, whether I win or I lose, that voice will be heard, so when you go away from this tonight. And you sit in your homes and you wonder what it's like to be a counselor, remember, you are the people. You are elected to take care of the people, and they trust you to do that, so please, highly consider running for council. Be a part of it, change for the better, because that's what you are here for. So thank you in that, and have a good night, and we'll see you next time around.